Okay, good evening. Welcome to the committee as a whole. Today is Tuesday, May 7th. We're gonna get started here with our meeting. Uh, Kim, roll call, please.
Thank you. Council President Corr, Councilmember Boyce.
Yeah.
Councilmember Boyd.
Here.
Councilmember Fincher.
Here.
Councilmember Larmour.
Here.
Councilmember Michaux.
Here.
Councilmember Troutner.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Any changes to the agenda? Councilmember, we good? Okay, ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. We can move on to item number four, department presentation. First thing we have is item A, approval of the minutes.
Uh, Chair, I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion and second. Any discussion? CNN, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Let the record show, record pass. Moving on to item B, payment of the bills.
Chair, I move to approve payment of the bills. Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show, motion pass. I thought we talked about this before the meeting started.
Sorry, sorry.
Okay. Move on to item C. Let's look at our financial report. Michelle Ferguson, please.
Good afternoon, Council. I'm Michelle Ferguson, and I will be presenting the March 2024 monthly financial report. All right, so there's gonna be a workshop in June to go over the 2023 year in review, so I'm just gonna focus on where we are in 2024 and kind of how we compare to years before at the same time.
Okay.
So highlighted at the bottom is the sales tax revenue. If you look at the right two columns, it's the budget and the actuals to date, and so we are coming in slightly higher than budgeted. But if you take a look at March in the prior year, we are coming in slightly lower than we were at the same time last year. This was anticipated that the revenues weren't gonna kind of keep at that same high point, so the budget was adjusted accordingly for 2024 to account for this kind of lower revenue. So we're gonna keep our eye on that and make sure, hopefully, it's just kind of that, it'll stay just a couple hundred thousand dollars lower, and we'll stay at that rate for the rest of the year.
Okay.
On the next slide, utility tax has been highlighted. The revenues for that are coming in higher than budgeted and higher than the year before in 2023. So water, sewer, drainage, electric, those are all coming in nice and strong like we anticipated. Cable utility tax continues to come in lower, about $15,000 a month lower than it was in 2023. The budget was adjusted, but it probably is not gonna make budget by the end of the year. Telephone utility tax, which had been seeing a decrease every year for the last few years, is actually kind of leveled out, and we're not seeing a decrease at this time. We're actually about a couple thousand dollars a month higher than we have been in the last couple of years. Highlighted on this slide for the general fund are revenues for charges for services, fines and forfeitures, and miscellaneous revenues. All three of these revenues are coming in higher than anticipated for a budget and higher variance than they were for '23 and '22. So charges for services, those revenues are higher for fire, about $250,000 higher than they were at this time last year, and then also for ECD, which are about $375,000 higher than this time last year. Fines and forfeitures, those are slightly higher, and that is due to penalties mainly for parking as well as BNO penalties. And the miscellaneous revenues are higher due to interest income.
Okay.
So now we'll take a look at the other funds, and there's not too much of concern right now. It's pretty early in the year. But some of the higher variances, I'll be pointing out. One of those is the lodging tax fund. The variance for expenditures is much higher than usual, but that is due to, back in February, council approved the lodging tax grant awards for the fall of 2023 application cycle, and so those expenditures are related to the grants being awarded to those various organizations. And there wasn't really anything of concern or to point out on this slide and then on this last one. Highlighted are the insurances for workers' comp, liability, and property. And those are highlighted because the revenues are quite a bit higher than they have been in prior years. Those were adjusted during the 2024 biennium to higher collections from departments to pay in, so we wouldn't have to have that large transfer at the end of the year to account for higher premiums that we're having to pay and for the minimum fund balance requirements. So hopefully, those increase in revenues will get us through the end of the year. Are there any questions?
Are we okay, team? Okay. Thank you. We look forward to the 2023 year end. That'd be great. Okay. Thanks, Michelle. We'll move on to item D. We have an ordinance submitting Chapter 3.70 of the Kent City Code relating to small work. Logan, how you doing, sir?
Great, how are you?
Real good, thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, Council. Logan Todd, here today presenting an ordinance that updates the small works portions of the Kent City Code. Last year, the state legislature passed a bill that made changes to how cities may utilize the small works rosters. These changes are what this ordinance amends in our code to stay compliant with state law. First, just a quick refresher on the small works process. Washington law requires public works projects estimated to cost over 116,000, 116,155. That involve more than one trade to be publicly bid. As you know, this is kind of the process where we go through, do a bid, come back to you all eventually. State law authorizes another process where projects under 350,000 can be bid out to a more limited set of contractors. So this process allows for faster contracting while maintaining a competitive element to drive costs down. Cities sometimes maintain their own rosters, but we often utilize the statewide roster. This is the MRSC roster. This new bill actually designates this MRSC roster as the official statewide roster. The first major change to our process relates to how the cities actually use this roster. Previously, the city would pick, I think it was three to five contractors from the small works roster, go back to those contractors, get bids. Now what we'll do is reach out to the whole roster who has indicated, or the, sorry, indicated interest in doing work in the geographical area, and then get bids from them, go with the lowest bidder. Remember, this is just under 350. The second major change creates an optional new process when it's under 150, or sorry, 150 or less. So in this instance, we can direct contract with small businesses if there are six or more on the applicable roster. If there are less than, sorry, five or less small businesses, we can go direct contract with anyone. So this will give us some more options for those contracts that may be smaller, where we can't direct negotiate normally, but we can direct negotiate under the small works roster. Lastly, we'll have to develop a small minority, women, veteran-owned business plan. Sorry. And then we're still waiting on additional guidance to implement this plan and other plans that go with it, which is the, oh, sorry, I skipped over the small business rotation policy, which is another plan we have to have. So basically, we're going to have to rotate what small businesses we actually contract with while then also potentially giving, making sure we reach out to all businesses on the roster that include these small minority, women, veteran-owned businesses. We don't know what that plan looks like yet, but we're gonna put that together afterwards. And then lastly, there's a minor change that allows us to waive retainage. Any questions?
Hey, just one quick question, just to make sure I answer it. Anything on the $350,000? You said you're going to this, I don't, data bank where you, everybody have an opportunity to be able to see it and bid on it, and you'll take the lowest bid from that?
Yeah, it's all contractors who've indicated interest in doing work in the applicable area. Unclear exactly how big that roster's gonna be. It's gonna be less than if we put it out for public bid, but it could still be 20, 50-plus contractors, depending on the type of work we're asking them to do.
I think it's kind of a good thing. I remember a long, long time ago when I had a small business that was really good from a minority perspective, right? So it gave me an opportunity to see the type of contract, and it sounded like this would definitely benefit some of the small minority contractors as well, too.
And I believe that's kind of the purpose of the bill.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, Councilmember, any questions? I don't have a light in front of me, but please.
I had one, I had a question. Did you say that the second one was optional, the 150 under?
Yeah, so, exactly. So with that, we could basically have three options. 150 or less, you could go out and just bid it like normal. We could not use the small works process. We could just bid it out. That depends on type of project, how comfortable we are with bidding it out. We could use the same option we used for 350 or less, as was just alluded to, you know, you could go out, tell everyone on the roster. Otherwise, you could use that option where you either look for five small, or sorry, six or more small businesses, or if there's five or less on the roster, anyone on the roster, but you can direct negotiate with them.
Okay. Gotcha. Great.
Any other question, team?
Yes.
Please.
Thank you. So when you say area, are you talking about a geographic area, or are you talking about like an area of work?
Both, yeah. That's, I can clarify that a little bit more. So who, it's contractors who do that type of work who've indicated interest in working in the geographical area. So it's gonna be both. Contractors, basically, when they sign up for the statewide roster, are gonna say, I do X type of work, and I wanna go in Y type of area.
Any other questions? So Logan, is this your first presentation? Are you new here, or?
No, it's my second one. I've been here a year and a half now.
Okay, my first time, so welcome to the team.
Yeah, there you go. Absolutely, thank you.
Appreciate it. All righty. No other question? Ask for a motion, please.
Okay, Chair, I move to adopt ordinance 4489, amending Chapter 3.70 of the Kent City Code to implement changes to the small works roster process, previously adopted by the Washington State Legislature, which takes effect on July 1st, 2024.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion on the table? CNN, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show, unanimous pass. Logan, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, that's it for operation. We're gonna move on to ECDC. I'm gonna turn this over to Chair Larmour.
Thank you. We have a presentation from Kurt Hanson. Oh, from Michelle, sorry, from Michelle for the appointment to the Lodging Tax Advisory
Thank you, Chair Larmour, members of the council. Michelle Wilmot, City of Kent Economic Development. I'm also staff to Kent's Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. I am here tonight to seek your approval for the mayor's recommended appointment of Jim Moran to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Jim is the new general manager of the Best Western Plaza by the Green Hotel over by Riverbend, and he is taking over for Andrew Hutchinson, who retired four months ago. So we are thrilled to have someone representing one of our hoteliers, or representing one of our hotels, whose actual part of his requirements for his employment is to work with us on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, which is great considering it's hard for us to fill those spots. We currently have two vacancies for hoteliers, so we really would love to have your approval to accept Jim to join David Quoc on the committee. For just a, for those who don't know what the Lodging Tax Committee does, they actually review the expenditures of the lodging tax funds. They, as you, some of you know, I bring to you recommendations by the committee for expenditures of those funds for marketing purposes, whether they be events, or whether it's ongoing marketing activities that promote Kent as a leisure and tourism destination. The committee reviews those grant applications and makes those recommendations for your approval. So we would love to have as many people on this committee as possible.
Any questions? Okay, there's no questions. I will read the motion. I move to confirm the appointment of Jim Moran to fill the position vacated by Andrew Hutchinson, a member representing the hotel industry, to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for a term expiring April 3rd, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Right, any discussion? Okay, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hey, one quick thing, Michelle. Andrew played a huge role on this Lodging Tax Committee. I think it would be a good thing maybe to bring him to one of our council meetings and maybe recognize him, because he was probably one of the original members on this here, and he really put a lot of time and energy into it, so something to think about.
I, I'm ahead of you already. I invited him to come to receive some recognition by all of you, and he is shy. He declined. We will think of some other, other ways to do that, but thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Will you, okay. All right, we'll move on here. We'll move on to the Parks, Councilmember, I'm gonna ask Chair Michaux, excuse me, to take this here, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyce. All right, we have three items on Parks and Human Services tonight. First up, we have Julie here to talk about some changes to the Parks Commission. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President, council members. On behalf of Mayor Ralph and myself, we're introducing a new change to how we operate the Parks Commission, and we're hoping for your support tonight. To take you guys way back, which I actually learned something in my research on this one, is we actually created the Parks Commission way back in 1965 to actually run the park system. So I imagine we didn't have too many parks back then. Then it was later transitioned to city council to run. Interesting. And then eventually, the creation of the Parks Department themselves as the Department of the city. And so I would say, probably been about a 35-year gap between then and then in 2014, we kind of re-kicked it off. So it was a long time there. We didn't even have a Parks Commission. And past Park Director Jeff Watling brought in and kind of re-energized this group and brought them back in 2014. And that was really to focus a lot on park planning and the major maintenance backlog that we had in our system and how to really work on funding and eat a lot of our planning efforts around that. And it definitely served us perfect, which is awesome, because we have that kind of awareness now. But we really never really spent a lot of time on how do we use the commission? What should the commission be used for? So there was, you know, we had to work through that, kind of grow together. To clarify, the Parks Commission is advisory only. They don't do any kind of actual business through the commission like some of the other ones we have here at the city or in my own department. And so they really just provide feedback on a lot of things, and they truly are ambassadors out there in the system when they're talking to their neighbors and their schools or their PTAs or whatever they're involved in. They're kind of, you know, they have the inside scoop and skinny, and they can share more information. Since my arrival, it was in 2017, I would say the Parks Department has been in a constant state of growth and evolution. We've been doing a lot of different things with strategic planning, a lot of aggressive community engagement, and of course, our pursuit of national accreditation. And so it makes sense for us to look at how do we use our Parks Commission differently, and how do they work with us and integrate with us? So in 2021, we did hire a consultant to come in and work with the commission directly. It was kind of led by the commission members and the residents. And what is our purpose? What should we be advocating for? How do we work on things? And of course, it helped them create a strategic framework, which you see on the left here. Of course, commission members believe that they're advocates for vibrant park and rec programs in our community, and they believe they serve as a bridge between our residents and our local government, focusing on three core value areas, of course, equitable access to nature and recreational opportunities, well-maintained and safe recreational spaces, and then of course, meeting the needs for future generations. And then all those little name, you know, little titles you see on those trees down there, that's what the commission felt that kind of their focus area should be in, is stewardship of our public lands, financial stability of the system, community health, equity and access, safe spaces, public engagement, of course, building community identity with all the things we build in our system. So they built all that, and it's all great work, and we've been doing that, and we're ready for transformation now and try to work through what are we doing next. One thing I wanted to assure before I go into changes on the commission, the council, because we are changing up a little bit, is just talk a little bit about how Kent Parks focuses on engagement. We're very aggressive about it. We believe in it wholeheartedly. We serve the people, therefore, we plan with the people. So over, you know, between 2018 and 2024 now, we've got 12 guiding strategy or master plans or documents or needs assessments completed in our department. And those were all, if they were forward-facing plans, all built with the community in mind and with their engagement. The plans range now from anywhere from six years to 20 years. The human services strategic plan and their consolidated plan run together. It's a five-year cycle, so they're probably our fastest turnaround on a plan. And they also have very aggressive engagement on that as well. The Parks Commission at the time was a focus group on all the forward-facing plans and where they went there. And so you can see on the right, I just, whoop, jeez, uh-oh. Oh, okay, sorry. I'm like, ooh, I better stop waving my hands around. If you see on the green, I just pulled a little bit of some stats, so you could see how many touchpoints we had in the community. So during that same timeframe, I told you, we're talking almost 14,000 residents we've been able to talk to, survey, you know, come to open houses, all that kind of thing. To put that a little in perspective, if you wanted to do a quantifiable statistically valid survey, for instance, that then extrapolates out to be a representative sampling, you'd need probably around 500 feedback from communities. So obviously, we're over-the-top aggressive on how we look at that. So we have our Engage Kent Parks platform, which translates into multiple languages. We have 400 residents now following those projects. Every capital project in Parks goes through a formal outreach public process. We have established program evaluation for our programs, for participants to give us feedback after. We, of course, have our own e-newsletter with almost 18,000 subscribers. Kent Parks also has a Kent Arts Commission as well as a Human Services Commission. We have the Senior Center Advisory Board and Men and Ladies Club at Gulf. So we have a lot of people advising, let me put it that way. And then we have a ton of communications tools, which hopefully you've all seen already. So thinking through the sustainability of the Parks Commission, you know, part of the challenge is sometimes the commission wanted to get into commission, into like Parks business, actually looking at contracts, that kind of thing, not necessarily the function of the commission. So we've worked with the commission in the past to just make sure they understand the city council process. At the time, we had Parks Committee. Now we still have this process. Feel free to be engaged in any part of actual formal business. You all are at their disposal as well. Some of our agendas are getting more challenging to build because we can only present so many times the same thing, because we're not really running business. Little bit of challenge on the new term limits that were imposed in '21 on that change, just because you spent a long time really building this base of who we are and what we're all about, term limits, you know, and then you opt out, and then we gotta kind of restart over. And one of the other challenges is we have a varying degree of investment, I would say, from commissioners. Some are fine, attending the two-hour meeting every month and giving feedback. Others wanna dive in and do more, so it's very hard to create, you know, a model that kind of meets everybody's varying degrees. As you know, we already have high profile in the community, and then we did work with the commission themselves on this and trying to figure out what's valuable to you, because we, we want people to serve in our commission and actually enjoy it, and like it serves a need, and they feel fulfilled, and you know, all that good stuff, right? And so we worked through a lot of this with the commission. So looking at kind of the new fresh look, the other thing we did is research 11 of our peer cities, too. They're still kind of the traditional model of the director comes, presents whatever, gets feedback, and leaves. We hired the consultant. We did explore internally in our own department, hey, what would be of value to you with the Parks Commission and what they do for us, as well as talk with both the current chair and the past chair, who are both actively supportive of the change. We really focused on how commissioner could receive more meaningful personal value on these commissions. And then obviously, this is Mayor Ralph's commission. I'm the liaison assigned, so I work directly with Mayor Ralph on what was her expectations. And then lucky me, I have a council member, Councilmember Michaux, who started in the Parks Commission and played both roles as a member, as a chair, trying to help the agendas all the way to city council. So I worked with Councilmember Michaux on what concerns you might have as a council member, all that good stuff. So I feel like we've got a good balance now on what we're looking at. So what you'll see is a redlined markup of the code change. We adjusted slightly, just the functions of the commission. There were some things on there like concessions. We don't really do that. That's not stuff we'd put in. So we did some modification there. We are reducing the frequency now of formal sitting in this room, you know, for two hours a night type meetings from 12 months to four months, so March, June, September, and December. And those meetings are gonna be like normal. We're gonna talk about capital projects and so on. Then the other remaining months, we are expecting immersion in our system. We want our, we want our commissioners to volunteer in our programs and get active in what we actually do, get to know the staff, get to know the community they're serving, and so on for more valuable information on that, and I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that. And then the only other change that you'll see that's significant in the city code is because I'm in bringing people into the system now, I do have to require a background check depending on where they volunteer. So it's a state law as well as a city policy that if they are working at the senior center... So it's a state law as well as a city policy that if they are working at the senior center, any youth programs or people with disabilities, they do have to have a background check. But some don't require, and some areas with youth, if we have supervision, don't require. But that's something that's new. Normally, if you just come to regular commission meeting, you wouldn't necessarily need a background, but this is new. What we believe this change is going to bring is a deeper understanding of who we are and what we're all about. They'll be able to talk to staff while they're volunteering. In fact, I've actually volunteered with several of our commissioners already, and they've given feedback. The intent is on the quarterly meetings to hear what they did and hear what they thought and see what they experienced while they were there. Increased accountability when you're more invested and you have ownership in what we're trying to do. Recommendations and engagement when we're talking about different policies are more important. Enhanced trust, basically their commitment goes higher to our system when they're immersion in there. And it's not really subjective perception anymore, it's actually earned and lived now, which is really neat, and so they'll be able to have that. Broader perspective and of course, sense of fulfillment. One of the coolest things is actually being out and actually delivering programs with the kids and with seniors and the families we have in our community. And this will also obviously help with staff support as well in our department. You can't see it, but I do have it available if you're interested. We put together, because I had to prove I had opportunities, one of the suggestions back from the commission is it's normally an evening thing for parks? And what about those people that work? And do we have stuff on the evenings and weekends? And I had to validate all of that with our staff, we've done that now. So we have, every quarter, we have opportunities as well as all year. We have day, evening and weekends to fit every person's needs. We have all interest areas, you could be youth, you could be stewardship, you could be whatever, we have all of our areas, all ages and abilities, as well as opportunities that, hey, just volunteer for two hours or come and do the whole series. So there's lots of options. So currently, right now, the commission has seven out of 12 members. We purposely held, we've been working on this on the back end and do depending change. We already did share this whole new framework and kind of in a more formal way with the commission at the April 24th meeting, and they're supportive of that. They all have until May 10th, we realized we changed the game on them a little bit. May 10th, so let us know they want to stay on. Before the meeting was already done, I had commitments from all but two to want to think about it a little bit, just to see, so that's cool. They want to help us kind of merge and see, you know, how this new one is. You all, hopefully, if you're supportive, will pass this through and goes to consent. Recruitment will begin soon, and then we hope to start and launch in June, this new way with volunteerism, starting third quarter. We are still, I want to rest assured, are still going to seek balance, gender balance, geographic balance, age balance, all that kind of stuff on our commission. We track that on the back end for us. Recruitment is still going to go out to everybody in the community. But I'm also, I have thousands of people that already volunteer for me now, and so I will be directly recruiting from them because they already meet seven months of the opportunity. So if you think about all the basketball coaches, whatever, hey, come in and join the commission and let us know how you feel about certain things. And so I think it's a great change. Will it eventually stay this way? I don't know. I think we want to keep massaging until we find like the right way that really helps and keeps people energized and engaged. And so that's what we are proposing. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for all that information, Julie. It looks like we have a question from Councilmember Boyce.
I'm just curious on your meetings, right? So you, right now, you say you, your meetings are two hours each month, right?
Yeah, two hours for, yeah, 12.
You're going to go to a quarter meeting, so that mean you're going to have four hours meeting?
No, we're still going to keep it two. I mean, I'll work that through with the chair if we need to, but it could go a little longer depending on what we're doing, but that's the idea is to still keep that two hours.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, do you have a question, Councilmember?
Yeah, so you mentioned that they're ambassadors out to their neighbors, so they're going to be volunteering in the different, in the different projects that they, excuse me, that the Parks Department does, different programs. So will there be a formal way for them to offer input? Will they just come back at that meeting, that four-times-a-year meeting and give the input? Will they be meeting with you individually? How will that happen?
Yeah, well, we take input anytime. All my commissioners know they can do that anyway. But no, it is more of a formal check-in when we have the formal meetings, meaning there'll be an agenda topic, like an actual on-the-agenda, say, hey, where'd you volunteer? What was your experience like? That's also the opportunity for commissioners to tell the chair, hey, I really want this on the agenda, let's talk about, maybe they saw something in that context, too, so they have that opportunity. And then each, the way that we're working this is it's a self-select, we don't mandate it, it's up to you. They self-select, they work directly with our staff member. Our staff member takes feedback, and then it's our staff member's job to log it, just that they've, you know, attended whatever they needed to attend that month. So our staff member also gets feedback as well. And then I've also, like I said, for me, I work some of these with my team, and so I have with some of the commissioners, and they can tell us, too. So I feel like there's a lot of avenues, and it'll be interesting as we evolve if we want to formalize it, like a little bit more on like, what'd you learn or what'd you see and so on.
Okay, and the other part question was, is there a minimum number of hours? You said some may do two hours, some may do the whole, okay, thank you.
Yeah, just to try and honor the original commitment out, and so it could be two, we'd love to have you 15, we have plenty of need. Oh, thank you, these are two, well, one's still on, the commission one's passed, yeah.
Any other questions? All right, Julie, I just want to thank you for all your time and effort and input that you have taken for this project. I know you've spent a lot of time and put a lot of thought into it, and I think it makes sense, the Parks Department is in a very different place than it was when the Parks Commission was started, not originally, but the newer version. So I think it makes sense to make this change.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? I'm going to read the motion. I move to adopt ordinance number 4490, which amends Chapter 2.60 of the Kent City Code to revise the duties, responsibilities and expectations applicable to the city's Parks and Recreation Commission members.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, up next, we have Brian Levinhagen to talk about some Canyon Ridge lighting.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Council. I'm Brian Levinhagen, the Deputy Director of the Parks Department. I'm here today to ask for approval to give Canyon Ridge Athletic Field Lighting Interlocal Agreement with Kent School District assigned. So just a little history on athletic fields in Kent and South King County. In 2019, King County completed the State of Place Study, which found that youth in South King County have fewer playfields and parks in their neighborhoods and that access to them is more restrictive than in the rest of the region. Seventy-five percent of youth from lower-income households have participated in organized sports versus 95% of more affluent peers. Youth of color are less likely than white youth to participate in organized sports. The study also looked at lit multipurpose synthetic turf fields and found that when you do that, you double the use on those fields. Our own city of Kent Parks planning has confirmed that there's an athletic field deficit here in Kent in the 2022 Park and Open Space Plan. According to NRPA Metrics, which is the National Recreation and Park Association, Kent needs to add four soccer fields to meet our national standards. We found that Kent residents travel all over South King County and even really even King County and regionally for games. So travel is becoming increasingly a bigger part of sports, youth sports, as competition for its field space increases and things get more competitive. Eighty-nine percent of Kent participants would stay in Kent if times were available on field. And again, we also found the synthetic turf field conversions with lights, double use in Kent, just like Seattle found. And really, across all sports, all ages, all abilities, everyone wants field space during the same time, those prime evening hours during the week and then on the weekends. So here you can see field use, this was an athletic field capacity study that was done as part of the 2022 Park and Open Space Plan. You can see that Monday through Friday, park use or field use is generally in the evenings, starting around 5:00, but all the way to about 10:00 p.m. And then you can see Saturday and Sunday, park, field use about 8:00 to 10:00, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So in the 2022 Park and Open Space Plan, we use the heat mapping to really show where we need to add park space in the city. We did find that we needed to add some park space in East Hill South. And then there are also a couple of system-wide initiatives that we called out as strategic opportunities that we needed to pursue in order to maximize Parks and Recreation in Kent. And, you know, so both of those centered around, two of those centered around partnerships with the school district, improving public access to school grounds and then also updating the partnership with Kent School District. Not this past joint meeting with the school district, but last year's April 4th, 2023, Julie, Parks Director Julie Paris-Indolz shared that we, Kent Parks works regularly with the Kent School District. We have a shared use agreement that goes back to 1969, it was last updated in 1983. Beyond that main agreement, there are a number of other separate agreements and MOUs that focus on things like maintenance responsibilities in adjacent park-school sites or parking or use after hours. So building on that momentum that was created in the 2022 Park and Open Space Plan, we were meeting with Kent School District representatives monthly, really productive meetings, centering around co-developing athletic facilities at Kent Ridge and then Canyon Ridge Middle School, which is the opportunity that I'm going to go ahead and talk to you here today. So if you look at Canyon Ridge, the former Sequoia Junior High site, it is right in the middle of one of those opportunity areas or those areas that we needed to add parkland in the East Hill South. And the school district recently converted the field at Canyon Ridge to synthetic turf as part of their renovation of that facility to reopen it as middle school. Here you can see a schematic of that field, well, you could, might be able to soon. So full-size soccer, there's a basketball court, there's a grass field that won't be open until next year, unfortunately, but that field does not currently have lighting. And so the opportunity to add lighting to that field will significantly increase usable hours there. And coincidentally, we, just this year, our recreation team started a spring soccer program, pre-K all the way through eighth grade. It's got amazing participation, almost 1,000 participants. It was vastly exceeded our expectations, and we actually started using this field last night, and thankfully it exists because otherwise we were going to have trouble finding field space for all these participants. So soccer and, you know, the need for soccer in Kent is growing, and so it really just, this is coming at the perfect time. So the actual interlocal agreement with the Kent School District, really just focusing on the fact that we both serve the same community, right? And there's opportunities to find ways to combine facilities to save operating money. The reality is the school district's primary use of the site doesn't overlap, so the school district, most of their use is done by 5:00, 5:30, even their evening activities, whereas Kent Parks, our main focus is 6:00, 10:00 p.m. in the evenings, and we have a lot of use on the weekends and the school district doesn't. So, so in the agreement, the hours that we would have exclusive or primary use of the site is between 6:00 p.m., 10:00 p.m. on school nights, and then 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on weekends and in the summer. The school district does have the right to use the fields during those times with advanced notice, but that's something we work out with them constantly anyways, and we work really well with them, so we don't have any concerns there. As part of this agreement, the city of Kent will pay for design, installation and maintenance of athletic field lighting. This will be contracted by the city and brought to council at a later date. The district will authorize the city to charge fees as a condition of community use during the hours the city is responsible for. And the operating cost to cover this new facility for Kent Parks will be, will come from savings that we're going to realize because in April, King County officially took over maintenance of the Inner Urban Trail in Kent for the first time in 40 years. So that's going to present opportunities for us to shift resources to this facility and then also revenue from field rentals here. And so the expected cost will be around a half million, hopefully a little less than that, and we're hoping to have it complete in fall of 2024, right as the days starting to get shorter again. So this is that facility up there, you see beautiful, brand-new field. The track will be finished in June, we would start our project just after that. And really just want to throw a huge thank you out there to Kent School District staff, Dr. Wade Berenger, Dave Buzzard, Brian Smith, Brett Scribner, who have been fantastic to work with throughout this whole process. And really just, I think their attitude and their commitment to trying to find new ways to benefit the community aligned with what Kent Parks is trying to do and, you know, we've been trying to, in Kent Parks, we've been trying to have agreements like this with the school district ever since I got here, 15 years ago. So to actually be in this position, that's really exciting and it's a huge opportunity. And also just want to really thank Canyon Ridge Middle School staff and especially the social staff, because they're the ones that are going to have to kind of deal with extra locking up responsibilities and garbage and things like that. But Kent Parks is responsible for operating the site while we're using it, so it'll be a shared duty, but there will be impacts there. So with that, questions?
Thank you for that presentation, Brian. You had a few little things hidden in that presentation that were good news things. Maintenance on Inner Urban, we don't have to pay for anymore.
Yeah.
And then youth soccer, the spring program, sounds like it's doing great.
Yeah.
I wish they had that when my son was doing soccer because it's much warmer in the spring, so great. And this is a great overall project as well. Do we have any questions for Brian? Nope, okay, I will read the motion. I move to authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement with the Kent School District for athletic field lighting and joint synthetic turf field use at Canyon Ridge Middle School, subject to terms and conditions acceptable to the Parks Director and City Attorney.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passes. And then we have Brian up again, he's going to talk about a real, another opportunity to partner with the school district.
All right, thank you. So, so this, I'm going to talk about, there's an agreement that we've been negotiating with the school district to use the school grounds at Kent Laboratory Academy, something we're calling the Schools Out Park Program. It's only info-only because it's, the dollar threshold doesn't reach council's approval requirements, but it's a really exciting new opportunity that kind of came about as we've been meeting with the school district, so we wanted to share that with you. So also going back to 2022 Park and Open Space Plan, I mean, as I think council's well aware, there's a park deficit in the East Hill North area. The level of service in East Hill North is 29% that of the rest of the city. We are right now working to build Kent's first new park in 15 years in this area of the city to help with that deficit. But even with that, and even if we fully develop all the other park-owned property in this area, there's still a need to add park space in the future, and this will all take a lot of time. So in the Park and Open Space Plan, again, we use the heat mapping to show where we need to add park space. Two of those areas are actually in East Hill North. And again, we had the same system-wide initiatives that they called the increased public access to school grounds as a way to solve some of our park and rec needs in Kent, and then also updating the partnership with Kent School District to try to just find new ways to better serve the community. So if you look at Kent Laboratory Academy, it's really the best opportunity in this area of the city to provide short-term, immediate benefit for Parks and Rec. They just built a new school with amazing school grounds, great visibility to the road, and so just a really cool opportunity. But right now, the grounds at that school are locked after school hours. You see, that's a picture of a locked gate, but you can also see all these great recreational amenities around there, the playground, the ping-pong tables that are actually undercover. You have a great walking track, field, backstop, three half-basketball courts and a full basketball court, so just a great space. And so this is the area that's included in the agreement with Kent School District. You see, again, just summarizing those amenities that are available there, just a great site. They do have a separate little parking area that we can lock off to just use for park purposes after school hours and then on the weekends, so really lends itself really well to converting it for public park space. So we're kind of, this is kind of a new thing we're trying, it's a pilot program. You know, if it works in the first year, we'll keep doing it from there. We will have use of the site from 4:00 p.m. to dusk on school nights and then dawn to dusk on non-school days, including weekends in the summer. Obviously, in the winter, 4:00 p.m. to dusk is not a very long window, so we probably won't, we'll have to kind of work through that, what hours that'll operate and when it'll kind of open up, probably peak season April to September is what we're thinking right now. The operating costs for this are again covered by those cost savings by King County taking over the maintenance of the Inner Urban Trail. We will be responsible for maintenance related directly to park use of the site, and there's one garbage can there that we will be responsible for emptying, and like I said, the agreement can be signed by the mayor, so. So again, a huge thank you to Kent School District staff, they've been great as we've met with them and really made this happen. And just, again, just their attitude and just ability, their willingness to work with us has been, really allowed things like this to happen. So again, it's a pilot program, but really excited about the opportunity to open more school grounds to the public after school hours, especially in the area of the city we need it most, so that I'll take questions.
Thank you, Brian, and Kent School District for being innovative and coming up with this plan. Hopefully it works, hopefully everyone can behave themselves and we can continue to do this. It's much needed in that area, for sure. Councilmember Lamar, you have a question?
Yeah, so definitely needed in the area, thank you for being innovative in this way. So just to clarify, it'll be open to the So just to clarify, it'll be open to the public even if we're not running a program?
Right. This is, this is not a program site. It's just a, basically it will function like a neighborhood park. And so, yeah, it'll be open, we'll, we'll add some signage on the street and on the gate. And we are going to have a special sign that clarify, you know, this is a learning space first, and if it isn't treated right, it will go away. But, yeah, so it's, it's just drop in, normal neighborhood park type setting.
Fabulous, thank you.
Council, Council President Core.
Thank you, Councilwoman Show. Thank you, Brian. It's a great idea. My question is, how are we letting the community know about this other than just the signage?
Great question. So July is Parks and Rec Month. By then, we're, we're anticipating having it open. We are going to do kind of our first event for Parks and Rec Month in July at this site. We might, we've been talking, we might do a, like a formal kind of opening before then. We're still working out the details of that. But, yeah, we're going to push it out, you know, through our platforms and do everything we can to bring attention to it. Again, we're super excited about it and, yeah.
Councilmember Fincher?
Would there be any spaces there that parents could rent for birthday parties or is it all first come, first served?
At this point, it's, it's a neighborhood park setting. So either we first come, first serve. So again, just trying it out, easing into it and, you know, hoping, hoping everything works out, so.
Brian, will there be signage at the park?
Yes.
We'll say Schools Out Park?
Yeah. Well, yeah. And there will be our rule signage and we do, we're not going to allow dogs because that's a school district thing and, you know, we want to make sure we're respecting their rules and the site's intention as an educational space first. But, yeah, we'll, we'll have very clear, our park rules will be listed and we'll have signage that clearly unadvised hours when it's open for park use. And it will never be open for park use during school hours. So, yeah.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you so much, Brian. Thanks for working through the technical difficulties.
Technical.
All right, back to you, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Chairman Show. And thank you, Councilmember Boyes, for taking over this meeting and right back to you for public safety.
Teamwork, that's what we are. Thank you, Madam President. We're going to move on to public safety and we're going to be talking about body worn cameras. And we have Commander Michael Armstrong. How you doing, sir?
Good, how you doing?
All righty.
Good afternoon, council. Good afternoon, Council President. I'm here to talk about a BWC grant that the jail applied for and was granted by WASPIC. We applied for a grant and were granted $135,000 and $628 for to purchase body worn cameras. It's a reimbursement grant. We purchase them, we send an invoice back to WASPIC, and then they send the money back to us. That will give the city of Kent corrections facility 21 body cameras, the issue to the officers, the corrections officers, and it'll bring to jail in the 21st century, give us more transparency for those critical incidents. And just asking that you guys support it. And if you guys have any questions, I'm willing to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Commander. Any question for the Commander? Yes.
Thank you for bringing this to us. I'm wondering, congratulations on getting the grant. I'm wondering, is there room in the budget to ensure maintenance and?
Yes. So along with the, it's an equipment reimbursement, so we can only buy the cameras. So there is room in the budget for the storage, and hand in hand with this will be a storage portion that goes out to the budget. And then, yes, there's room in my, in the jail budget to support the, that, that portion of it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, Commander Armstrong, good job. My question is though, what happens after five years? Are we trying to see what these cameras we were keeping or what?
Yes. The, the cameras will be there. I'm, hopefully I'm there for the next eight years, so they're going to stay there for the next eight years. The five years is pretty much the, the, the storage part of it. And then we just have to renew the contract in five years to keep the storage up. And then based on the life of the cameras, and we may have to upgrade the cameras at that point in time.
So the terms are what, every five years?
Yes.
Councilmember Fincher?
Thank you, Councilmember. I'm wondering, is 21 cameras enough for everyone on a shift? Or who gets the cameras? Are there people who won't have them?
The goal eventually is to get everybody their individual camera, but 21 cameras is more enough for a shift because we, our minimum staffing is 30 per shift, three shifts a day. I have two more additional cameras coming through another contract, so we'll have 23 total. And I am only about four away from getting everybody, everybody have their own, so I can issue everybody their own camera, to include myself.
Nice work with the grant.
Of the grants. Anything else, Councilmember? If not, I'll take this motion here. I move to accept grant fund from Washington Association of Sheriff and Police Chief of Body Worn Cameras at the Jail, amend the budget, authorize the spending of the grant fund, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and the police chief.
I second it.
Okay, motion second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record show unanimously passed. Thank you, Commander. Okay, we're going to move on to our next item, and this is amendment we're going to make, going by Victoria. Hello.
Hello. Good afternoon, Council Victoria Robin. I'm an Assistant City Attorney in the Law Department. I am here tonight to present an ordinance to you that will amend Chapter 902 of the Kent City Code. That's our criminal code. The state legislature adopted several new crimes during its 2024 legislative session. And as you all know, the Kent, Kent can only enforce and prosecute crimes within the city through Kent Municipal Court that have been expressly adopted by ordinance. So that is the purpose of this ordinance, to adopt those new crimes. There's also a crime that was not previously expressly adopted that has been addressed in this ordinance. And then two references to RCWs that have been repealed have now been removed from the Kent City Code. Three of the four new crimes go into effect on June 6th of 2024, which is why we're bringing it to Cow and Council tonight so that the ordinance will be in effect, hopefully, if you all approve, before they go into effect on June 6th. Any questions?
You make it sound so simple, Victoria. Thank you so much. Any question for Victoria regarding this here amendment? Looking to my left? And to my right?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Boyes. Thank you, Victoria. Can you clarify the crime that's missing? And is it going to impact current cases or is it just starting, is it July or June?
It goes into effect June 6th. So it's, yes, I can clarify. The crime that was not previously adopted by specific reference, it will not impact any current cases. It's related to environmental crimes. But what was adopted by the state legislature this session allows the court to order restitution for people who have been convicted of environmental crimes. And so when reviewing the new laws that were passed, we caught that, saw that the underlying crime had not previously been adopted by Kent City Code. So we went ahead and folded that into the ordinance so that if we wanted to prosecute that environmental crime, we have it in the Kent City Code and now the court can order restitution. So the restitution piece is what goes into effect on June 6th.
Thank you.
Are we good alike? So I'm going to read this motion here. I move to adopt orders number 4488, amending Chapter 9.2 of the Kent City Code to incorporate new crimes about the body state during the 2024 legislative session.
I second it.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Victoria, you have moved to number two on my law, favorite lawyer, and Pat, that's number three. So thank you very much. Madam Chair, turn over to you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyes. Now our Public Works, Councilmember Fincher, please.
Thank you, Council President. We're going to have Eric Preston talk to us about an amendment to an ordinance relating to parking.
Thank you very much. Hello, good afternoon, council members. I am Eric Preston, your City Traffic Engineer. And, yeah, proposing an ordinance with parking code modifications throughout the city. And most of these are in residential areas. There are two types of restrictions proposed. The first group of restrictions comes from new developments. So every year, there are many new development projects that are completed throughout the city. Many of them are residential developments that either build new streets, like the one pictured below, or extend or widen existing streets, streets, excuse me. When these streets are built, we know where restrictions should be based on street width and other factors, and the no parking signs are posted right away by the developer before anybody moves in. So now, no outreach was done on these because these are brand-new streets that hadn't been lived on previously. So after these projects are complete, we review them by doing a walkthrough. And at this time, we note the parking restrictions and add them to our list for a periodic update such as this. The additions to Kent City Code, Chapter 938020, they cover the typical 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week parking restrictions that have accumulated from new developments over the last year or two. And all we added 51 new lines of code as a result of this recent development activity. And so here is a map that shows the many little small dots and lines of restrictions on new streets or code additions. And the next group of proposed changes deals with overnight parking. So Kent City Code, Chapter 938045, covers overnight parking by imposing restrictions from 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. The Police Department has approved each of these areas, along with coordination from both parks and Public Works. These three specific areas have issues with a variety of nuisance parking, garbage accumulation, et cetera. And so the three streets are quickly, Wrighton Road, east of Kensington Avenue, Russell Road from West Meeker to the south end of the street, and southeast 274th from 126th to the east end of the street. And I'll go over each of these in detail so you can see what we're talking about. So the first is Wrighton Road near Earthworks Park. So this is as you're going up the hill. This would restrict parking from 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. from Kensington Avenue to 1.250 east, 50 feet east of Kensington Avenue. It's the area highlighted in the yellow box that you may or may not be able to see. It's still, would still allow guests who live nearby or guests of the park to park there during the day, just not overnight. And this is on the north side only. Next is Russell Road, overnight restriction, again, 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. This was requested by the Parks Department, who owns and manages the driving range on that side of the street, who recently widened the street to make that parking available. You can see cars with flat tires in the picture and other forms of disrepair, and some obviously haven't moved for a while. And so this would still allow parking during the day for guests of the apartment complex, the driving range, and also Green River Trail users, because there's a trailhead just south of there. All right. Lastly, southeast 274th Street, near Springwood Park. This was requested by the Parks Department, approved by PD, and it is supported by the two residents who live on this section of street. If I can get that, yeah. So that home right there. And I guess it's just off the picture a little bit right there. There are two residents who live nearby, so they are on board with these restrictions. It would still allow their guests and guests of the park to park there during the day, but again, not overnight. So that's all I have for you. Are there any questions?
My question is, when would signs go up for these no overnight parking areas?
Pretty, pretty quickly. As soon as it's adopted, we would send a work order in and get those in pretty quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Any others? Would there be a mailing out to the neighborhood around or maybe sending these signs?
So the, are you talking about the overnight restrictions?
Yes.
Okay. Now, since we already talked to the property owners that abut them, no mailings will go out?
Any others? That I need to adopt, we're just under 4.11, and maybe two sections of Chapter 9.38 of Kent City Code.
Second.
Session. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And now we're going to have David Payne talk to us about the TIP, the Transportation Improvement
Good evening, council. Committee of the Whole Members, that title should say 2025 to 2030 Transportation Improvement Program. I thought I had updated that this afternoon, so we'll hope all the other slides look good. It is so good to see all, all this evening. David Payne, City Transportation Planner, here to present on the Transportation Improvement Program. To the committee, the next step for the annual update to the TIP, as we call it, will be a public hearing on the 21st. So looking forward to presenting very similar information that evening, but happy to answer any questions or take any comments on the proposed tip from council or the public this evening. So picking them back up from where the conversation was in January and March, tonight we'll be presenting on the, the schedule for the annual update, the outreach and involvement process thus far, and also highlighting the proposed projects both being removed as complete from the TIP and also proposed to be added to the TIP. The schedule for the annual update, which we are required to do in the state of Washington each year in order to be in compliance with state regs, but it also helps us to be competitive for grants and also to help with the implementation of the projects. So in January, we reviewed the prior projects and came up with additional project nominations. Then in February, we drafted the list of projects to take out to the public. In March, we, we took the projects out to the public, both virtually and in real life, received comments, drafted the draft document that you see before you in the backup. Here we are in the beginning of May, a little bit later than April, and hopefully in two weeks, we will have a public hearing. And if, if so directed, we will adopt the amended TIP. Each year, we try to do a little bit more than the prior year for outreach and involvement. So, but you may have seen a, a version of this slide in prior years. So the list on the, the left are the events that we, that we hold each year. A little bit in bold, you can see the ones that are, that are public events or public-facing or where the public can come and comment on the, the projects. But we do consider this a continuous process. We say continuous because at the top of the, the slide, Transportation Master Plan and the Local Road Safety Plan, those are the lists of the projects that we draw from, projects and programs that we draw from to populate the near-term six-year plan. So the projects that are supportive of the five goals that are on the slide, those tend to bubble to the top of the list of the projects to be implemented, but we rely very heavily on the input of our stakeholders and those involved to help both elevate projects higher or perhaps say this is not quite the time to pull those projects forward. You see a host of our, our partners and participants listed on, on the slide, including the Bicycle Advisory Board, the Land Use Planning Board. On the right, we see a pair of the, the outreach and engagement tools that we, that we use. The screen capture at the top shows the, the web, the website, the web tool, the GIS story map that we use each year, including the QR code that's very popular, and then also a copy of the poster that we use in, over at Kent Commons. And other events, you've got also a copy of the translation available upon request listed very prominently at the top of the poster in multiple, multiple focus languages relevant to the city of Kent. So not shown on, there we are, it's a click, there we are. The completed projects, let's celebrate. For the past year, we've had a number of projects completed and therefore they will be removed as completed from the TIP. So going clockwise from the top left, we've got the 20, 240th Street Sidewalk Project. To the right, we see the, the Russell Road Pedestrian Improvement, Phases 1 and 2, from Meeker all the way up through Hogan Park. Then just to the, just below that, we have four rectangular rapid flashing beacon enhanced crossings. That's, that's what I write my notes down for, to make sure I get the, the name for that acronym right, on 104th Avenue Southeast, 240th, and also two on Central Avenue, north of James Street. And then the largest project completed just a little over a year ago in, in the TIP, but was removed last year, but we wanted to make sure we're highlighting it for, for this year, is the north phase of the 76th Avenue South Project. You can see in the lower left hand, we've got this wonderful aerial photo of the complete project. So all told, about $6 million worth of projects completed and removed from the TIP. Also, continuing the conversation from March, projects proposed to be added, and I'll go through each of these in turn, including referencing whether or not through each of these in turn, including referencing whether or not we received comments on the project through the engagement. So the first project on the list is a citywide safety implementation plan based on the Kent Target Zero Action Plan. So you may recall that a year and a half ago, we applied for a federal grant to fund a, a Target Zero Action Plan specific to the city of Kent, which will allow us to then be eligible for federal implementation funds through, through the same funded program, about $5 billion from the federal government. So we are in, currently in the middle of making and crafting that plan. We hope to bring that draft plan back to council as a, as a draft in the summer, but we'll also be bringing it back later this month for a, for a workshop related to safety, linking the Target Zero Action Plan where we are, updating council where we are, but also linking it back to the Local Road Safety Plan, since they are of a piece. You can see some images on the left of some of the engagement we've done, including survey, the screen capture at the lower left-hand corner, and then our Safe Systems Approach Wheel that we're gonna, we're gonna keep bringing up, because it's related to everything, both in the Local Road Safety Plan and the Target Zero Action Plan. As far as engagement, thus far, we've received about 250, well, we'll be speaking more to it on the 21st, but we've received about 250 responses to the citywide survey. So that's still active, and folks can participate, continue to if they want to. And we've had in-person engagement with about 150 folks at about four to five events, with another four or five events to come through the remainder of the project. And that is a grant-funded project. Moving on to the three multimodal connections proposed to be added to the TIP this year. Prominently up in the upper left-hand corner, we've got, although it's the northeast quadrant of the city, the East Hill North Community Park Access Improvements. This is a project in the TMP to, to widen 132nd Avenue Southeast between southeast 214th Street to southeast 221st Street. So it would add a, a left-turn pocket as well as a walking path on the east side of the corridor. The next project was already in the TIP, but we modified the language, so we're including it here as a, as a new project. But it's already been presented to council this year for an amendment, because we were fortunate enough to compete for and be awarded a, a grant to help expand the project. So what this, this project is to, on, also on 132nd Street, it's to overlay the project. But the original project included curb and all-weather surface walking path on the west side of the, the corridor, north of 240th Street, and then also additional connections to neighborhoods on the east side for a, for, to connect those neighborhoods to the pedestrian network. And then lastly, we've got the Central Avenue and East Smith Street. It's the northeast corner pictured in the lower left-hand corner. This is where adding to the tip, the two, so that the intersection can better accommodate large turning vehicles with the, the pedestrian area and potentially moving some of the signal pole accoutrements. The next category is preservation projects. We also competed within the, the past couple of months for a National Highway Systems Preservation Grant for two streets, 64th Avenue South and West James Street, between Meeker and Washington Avenue, or State Route 181. So this would do a mill and overlay of the two roadways, which are on the national highway system because of their, their transportation significance and connections to the, to the transit network. The, the project would also allow us to implement another project in the Transportation Master Plan, adding bicycle lanes to 64th Avenue by repurposing two automobile lanes, and that would be between West James Street and Meeker Street, that would help connect the, the two points and make, and finalize a connection for, for non, for active transportation modes. And last but not least, we have a coordinated land use and transportation plan for the Benson Corridor, also grant, grant-funded, very successfully awarded, or very successfully competed for this year, not yet awarded. We, we're still waiting for the letter from PSRC, and once we receive that letter, we'll be bringing it back to council for the official award acceptance. This is to, to create a, or to foster a transportation-efficient community, to take advantage of the eye-line investments that are being made on, on the corridor, to take advantage of, or to leverage the existing community and the mix of uses that are all along the corridor. The, the plan will be, will allow, the funding will allow for us to, to do in both engagement and a plan focused on the corridor. You can see the boundary is a little bit fuzzy. Some of that will be worked out through the scope of the plan, but the plan will allow us to both rein, reinvest and relook at projects within the corridor to help support the goals developed through the plan, as well as do some CIPA analysis to help support and advance those, the plan and the projects, as well as any potential land use changes that arise from the discussion. So that's it for the do's and don'ts. Now we've got time for, for questions, please, or comments, and it, and of course, the next steps would be a public hearing on the 21st.
Questions, comments?
I do have a question. Could you go back to the Northeast Hill Park? So is this, this is, I'm hoping this is not inclusive of everything that would be done related to the park along that road? So this is...
The improvements, and I'm gonna read specifically from the TIP if I can, because I wanna make sure I get the details right, are... The project will construct a southbound left-turn lane from 132nd Avenue Southeast to, southeast to 16th Street. So that's the, that's the turn lane. The intersection will, of 132nd and 216th will be reconstructed. A walking path will be added to the east side between 214th Place and the 22,000-block near Sunrise Elementary School. Enhanced crosswalks, and those will be with RRFBs currently, will be installed at southeast 214th Place and southeast 214th, 218th Place. And a sidewalk will be constructed on, to, on southeast 216th Street, between 132nd Avenue Southeast and the pedestrian entrance to the East Hill North Community Park.
Okay.
And so we've got a screen capture from the, the master plan of the park up in the top hand left, which helps identify some of the specific elements that are being included in the proposed project.
So I know the community's had a lot of concern about whether even the flashing beacons will be enough. If we accept this, you know, as it comes before us, does that preclude us doing even further safety efforts on that park?
Wouldn't necessarily couch it as a safety improvement, because the RFBs are intended to be a safety improvement, so, but I would say that the development of the project has yet to come. So the next step would be engineering to help inform some of the design alternatives. And of course, there will also be cost considerations that will come up. So that's, that would, those would be the next steps for the project, as I understand it, but I'm gonna look to my director for, for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Director Bierin?
Just to add on to that, David, thanks for that. We've been working with the Parks Department on the necessary access improvements to get the park constructed. They've engaged a traffic consultant, take a look at access into and out of the site, and just kind of what it will take to help that access. So we're working with them and the consultant to get an agreement on what exactly is necessary on 132nd.
Yes.
Thank you. Chad, I thought that a safety study had already been completed for this area?
The consultant took a look at what they thought was necessary. They made some recommendations, and they're included in the description that, that David put together, but we've also been listening to input from the residents out there, just listening to what folks have, and if there's anything that we have overlooked by way of local knowledge, we wanna make sure we're taking that into account as we move forward.
Can you tell me more about this consultant? Was it like a traffic?
Traffic engineering consultant.
Okay. So they came up with this recommendation?
Yeah. They took a look at the area and recommended what, what should be included in order to provide what they would consider to be proper access for the park.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? That's it then. Thank you very much. That's it for Public Works.
Good evening.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. And with that, we are adjourned for Committee, Committee of the Whole. Thank you very much. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, May 7. We have two items on our agenda today. First up is Parks Natural Resources Program Update, and we have Garen Lee and Margaret Wagner. Welcome.
All right, thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Council President and Councilmembers. It's been quite some time since we've been in front of you to talk anything about parks, urban forestry, or natural area management, or any of that sort. So really looking forward to your, our time with you this evening. I will forewarn you a bit that we are going to try to cover a lot of information. Please feel free to ask questions however respectfully you would like to be able to share as much as possible. So we have built-in time at the end for any questions, but if you have anything that's burning, please, please share that. Our intent this evening is to overview the journey of managing natural spaces in the city's park system today. I mean, even just as we were putting this slide together, 2018 seems like such a long time ago, and at the same time, it feels a little bit like yesterday. For those of you that may remember from our presentation in 2019, we had our guest Doug. He is still alive and well. You can see that in this last month. He is six and a half feet tall, still doing well at Clark Lake Park. Some of the themes are interwoven through the presentation or what we're sharing this evening includes like lessons learned since all of this time has passed, new approaches evolving with our community and hearing from them. And in the end, we hope you'll have a clear understanding of what our program looks like this year in 2024 and a bit of what is ahead of us as we have reset our approach to natural area management in the system. So, all that being said, we get started. So with any journey, where do you start is an important question, and luckily, or thankfully, our community has helped us out in this area. In 2019, the Comprehensive Recreation Program Plan was put together as part of the feedback and in, or putting that plan. Outdoor recreation, outdoor programming in parks, and nature programs were high on the priority list in terms of need and interest. In thinking about our, the 2022 Park and Open Space Plan, similarly as part of the public engagement and outreach piece, we heard that nature trails, natural areas, walking trails were a priority in terms of investment looking ahead, and also as part of that, that safety in our parks and maintenance were an emphasis area that we should look at in the next five years post the 2022 plan. Looking into the plan itself, and then, as this was being, all of this information being compiled and put together, we know that as part of the plan, investment in, capital investment in our park system was part of that. Some of the locations here that I'm calling out is Mill Creek Park, Clark Lake Park, the future East Hill North Community Park, Campus Park. The reason we're highlighting those is all of those as part of capital investment and a park and open space into our system have natural area components in them. Working with that information and planning forward, we identified as, also as part of the Open Space Plan, that a natural, dedicated natural resources work group was going to be necessary in order to be able to pay attention to these areas. Within that group, and previously, as in looking actually at the roles and position skillsets, previously we had a program coordinator. While considering what the, what a natural resource program would look like going forward, we chose to evolve that to a natural resource coordinator, of which Margaret is holding that position currently, as a way to broaden, I think, a role in recognizing the different areas that we would need to look at and managing more effectively. So thinking of 2022 also as a bit of a benchmark year, obviously, the Park and Open Space Plan was completed. The Mill Creek Canyon Cleanup Project was near, complete or nearly complete. I think if you recall, that was an initial investment, kind of that heavy lift of getting started to really clean up the canyon and get it to a place where we could support it at an operational and a kind of a natural, looking at ways we manage that area and under a natural area management perspective. At the same time, the Lower Russell Road Levy Project and the Van Doren's Park, and Van Doren's Park Project were finishing up. You know, as, as part of that, we are look, opened up the discussion of looking at the publicly accessible portions of the Green River Natural Resource Area as one large public space, and then transferring responsibility of that area to the Parks Department. I think all of this collectively for this year also is pointing us to that we needed to look at and understand that, look at a sustainable, ongoing maintenance solution or resource for managing all of these spaces effectively. Where that got us to is the creation of the New Parks Operations Natural Resource Team as part of the 2324 budget process. And again, just want to say thank you very much for that support through that process. So much of what we are talking about and what Margaret will talk about today, or this evening, would not be possible without that investment. So again, thank you. So, what does the team look like today? In 2021, we had two FTE positions, existing arborist position and a natural resource specialist position, plus three part-time seasonal positions. Today, and I just rather than, because most of them are here, rather than talking about the org chart, I'd actually like to introduce them. So Dwight Rodarm, here is our natural resource specialist. He comes to us, transferred from the operations team. He has, I'll say, more than a decade of experience working on that, so we lean into his experience in terms of establishing our practices in the field, some of the approaches and frequencies that Margaret will speak about in her natural area management. He and Connor, who is here, are part of the field staff. Patrick is, wasn't able to attend this evening, so when you hear about our natural area management approach, these are the folks that make it happen. And then, our current Arbor, Park Arborist, Jillian, self-described tree geek, and I'll share this a little bit about her, that she is by training Elsaway Baker. So, an example of we have in a, a very passionate, fantastic group of folks who bring a lot to the table and are, are the team that is behind these org chart boxes. So, that was the team. What does the program look like? So we've created three areas of the program: Park Urban Forestry, Natural Areas Management, and a Natural Resources Oriented Community Engagement. The overall outcomes we are working towards, kind of the big umbrella-type goals, is really ecological stewardship and access to nature, and just the elements that we are currently looking at to define those. Those are the, those are the goals that we are driving this entire program for, and much of the details that you're talking, that you will hear about as we go through the presentation this evening are guided by kind of these overall intents. Stepping back a little bit, so right, we are still the Park Operations Division. I think many ask the question, how does natural resources fit into what is really an operations and maintenance team? This is how we are currently organized. Developed Parks or the operations team are those folks that are out there on a daily basis, ensuring that our park spaces are as available to the public as we can make them. These are the folks that also support our recreation programs or community events, they, and, and the grounds on our facilities. The major maintenance team or our Support Services Group focuses on our life cycle, our preventative maintenance. They are currently also charged with managing the parks and facility stormwater systems as a, as a, as also a new program going forward. And then, of course, you'll hear much more about the Natural Resources Management Team. The graph on the right, maybe a little bit hard to read, but the percentages represented there, 5% and 10% on the two different graphs from 2019 and then 2024. Keep those, keep those percentages mine, in mind as I get to the, to the next slide. That percentage is based on the total staff hours for our entire division, and the percentage is that portion that is dedicated towards natural resources management. Which brings us to here. So as a snapshot of the system, there are 800 and eight, a little more than 800 acres of what we would currently classify as natural areas under our current approach. Remember that the team you are seeing here is now charged with embracing all of that. That is at 51 locations. So while in one person, one way we can look at, we've doubled the amount of resources we have available towards natural resources. Overall, in terms of the time we, the resources we have available as division, it is still a percentage, and what they are managing is here. And with that, I'll sit back, and, from Margaret.
Thanks, Garen, and everybody. Good to see you again. So yeah, I'm going to pick up there and talk through our, our program, you know, just everything we do in about 20 minutes. So we do talk about our program in these, in the terms of these three buckets. Venn diagram that actually Jillian called out as a, as a better image for how we talk about ourselves is very apt. There's overlap everywhere, and in fact, some of the coolest things happen in the overlap, but it helps us talk about how we're dividing and conquering and how we are communicating when we, when we divvy up into these buckets. We'll go into all of those details as we move forward. So, actually, before I do, oops, can I go back? Maybe not. Let's not try, because like I said, oh, there we go. Thank you for the help. Want to make sure and call out that Dwight is mostly living in this natural areas bucket. Helps to have a point of contact, place to start if there's questions. Jillian is, is mostly living in that urban forestry bucket and in charge of things like that. I'm attempting to wrangle the community engagement pieces, and as Connor and Patrick could tell you, they get pulled in every which direction, every which way. Really helpful that we now have the team to, to divvy this up between. Okay, so yeah, let's go into natural areas. Generally, these are the bullet points I'm going to try to hit quickly here. We'll go into more detail as we move through it. And really, the place to start is that we are trying to establish a methodology. We're trying to take a lot of past experience, both individual skillsets and career expertise in our team and department experience with, with different particular projects endeavors, a couple of which you've heard about in, in a lot of detail. You're seeing some pictures from Mill Creek Canyon up there. But we're really trying to bring a lot of expertise, reflect on things, bring lessons learned, and come up with an overall program approach, the beginning of a concept of level of service approach to management. In some ways, we're at the beginning of that process, but we really want to talk you through kind of the, the approach we're bringing to that. And using the Mill Creek Project as a case study is, is a good way to do that. So, the chance to collect data on what we're doing in the field, reflect on how it's going, support our theories about what does and doesn't work is really central to a lot of the things we're developing as, as a program here. We kept much more detailed on our staff hours, much more detail on our staff hours for '21 and '22, asked a lot of our field staff as far as reporting on what they were working on, so that we could come up with some of these conclusions on, you know, if, does what we think is going to work, does it actually work? Our main hypothesis of sustained and routine maintenance, we're hoping that leads to more proactive and effective staff hours. More proactivity, less reactivity. Never going to get to no reactivity, which is another thing, theme we'll touch on here. Trying to reclaim sites, stop degradation, stay on top of places that are stable, and then be strategic about selecting areas to improve, strategically improve. Data is going to come up a lot through, through my rambling here, trying to find ways for data to inform what we do, and then data to inform whether what we're doing is working. So both initial project setup and self-checking ourselves, all with the goal of maximizing the positive out of these spaces and minimizing or most effectively managing the negatives. So, one of the things we took away from the Mill Creek, Mill Creek Canyon Management Case Study Endeavor Pilot Project, whatever you want to call it, we really did see the benefit of, you know, having more time at these spaces was leading to more proactive hours and less reactive hours. As you heard Garen say, we have, we have quite a few properties and quite a lot of acreage. We can't simply say, cool, let's do the Mill Creek approach, full bore everywhere right off the bat. So we have to bring concepts of prioritization and clear communication about setting, you know, expectations that we're trying to come up with sustainable approaches to our work. There's a lot of words on this site. Really, the takeaway is there's, we have a frequency for how often we're putting eyes on these sites. We call them site checks. I will go into a little bit more of what, what we mean when we say that. So, we, we have know, we have found, I'm sure it's not a surprise to anybody here, that presence at our sites, staff presence, eyes on, being seen and seeing impacts of both ecological inputs and community inputs at these sites is really important. We are, the staff who are out there, we're asking them, which really want to call out major props to Patrick and Connor on this one, we're asking them to hold a lot in their heads as they're walking through these spaces. They've got the natural resources management expertise, situational awareness, communication, and really just approach and openness to this, that they can be walking through these sites and identifying if there's new encampments, are there trail washout issues, is there a tree concern? How urgent might that be? Who needs to hear about it? Is there graffiti or other vandalism? We're asking them to do some things while they're out there, do incidental cleanup or, you know, like, okay, there's a little tree across the trail, can we do that now? Or communicate if something needs to go on a, on a project list for a future day. Tap into other resources. A lot of those then go to Dwight and Jillian, and the fact that they have time and expertise to do crucial communication with PD or Human Services in the case, in the case of encampments, or pulling in tree contractors or getting out there and doing a tree assessment. The fact that we have the staff time to do the initial site check and follow-up is crucial. This is the base. We have to make sure we're doing this base level. We can't do it every week, every day, everywhere. We have to prioritize, but we have to make sure we're clearing some hurdle of base presence in order to be able to do cool things. Like these next few slides that I'm going to walk through, that are program areas that we're ramping up more now that we have a better handle on the base, more staff time to be present at sites. Things like nature trails. We want to add more, we want to maintain what we have, we need to get a sense of what our system looks like. We've tapped into our GIS data management expertise in parks planning, or a shared position with us in parks planning, so that we can actually map the miles of trail that we claim we're maintaining and have conversations about how many we're doing to which level of effort. So this, the concepts of methodology, standardized approach, setting expectations, really do factor through everything. And then having staff on board that really has the ecological management expertise to do, to do both, be talking about trail alignments that make the most sense for erosion and natural areas and impact to critical areas and all the, all that good stuff. Another thing that we do some of, I will clarify that, you, so wildlife management in our parks, I'll clarify that we really, the situations we truly manage are mostly if there's what I like to call a conflict of interest. For example, the, the beaver at Clark Lake that would really like the water level to be a little bit higher than we would for the sake of our dock. Most of what we're doing is taking note of what's there, but there are some cases where we are trying to manage the situation. Some of that involves permits, and so this is, the Clark Lake Beaver example is a, is a good one. To really call out that that's, you know, that's led to some signage, that's led to us being a bit of a liaison with WDFW for the sake of permits. Wildlife will come up later as a, as a really cool way to tap into engagement as well, but from the overall site management perspective. One thing else I wanted to call out here is we do try to factor in things like nesting season into our, into our management expertise. So having not just the staff time, but staff time with ecological knowledge is important. Wouldn't say anybody really wants to be doing noxious weed management, but it is something that it's important we have more time for. This is just an example of some of the data we collect about poison hemlock along the Green River Trail, and it makes a good example that having more staff time has led for us, led to us having time to coordinate with our Public Works Operations and King County partners, which is really crucial if you're talking about a species that needs to be managed through a whole area. And then, what we really want to be doing more of, and as you will see is one slide that I'm rushing through, so it makes the case that we can't do it everywhere, but ecological restoration. So I referenced earlier, finding ways to be strategic about where we are making improvements. This is an example from Saltair Vista. The top picture has a bunch of invasive holly in the mid-ground, and then you can see the lower one, there's just more space to the trees. It's an example of a multi-purpose project. So any of our site restoration projects need to be checking a lot of boxes because we are still staff limited. So then, in that case, we're talking about site improvement, encampment replanting, sightlines, potential to engage a new trail in the area that just went through parks planning last year, meets a lot of our goals. Also, a decent way to transition into the urban forestry bucket, because as we know, we're sitting there talking about a large natural area, there's a lot of trees in natural areas. There's also a lot of trees in our developed park space, and Jillian gets to deal with both. So we'll go into all, all of the detail here. For anybody who was around at the time that we came and said, hey, we need to start with inventory, we came and said we need to start with inventory. We use a program called Treekeeper. The platform is less important than the types of data we're capturing in there. The green arrow there is pointing to one particular little triangle at Saltair, and then that dialogue box that pop, is popped up is an example of all of the details that our field staff enter in about an individual tree. This one was particularly cool because it was one that had to come down and then was replaced. We'll see, we'll see that little guy later in the slides. Important thing here is that we are managing this level of detail in our data for standalone trees. Standalone versus forested sand trees, when you see the pictures, it makes sense, we use a lot of jargon, but the diagrams help. We are not collecting that level of detailed data about every single tree through all of Lake Fenwick or Mill Creek Canyon. So we're constantly filtering, okay, which, which trees do we need how much data on? Yes, and that will transition to, same, same words you're going to hear me say way too many times. What's our methodology? What's our approach? Is it sustainable? Can we factor it across our site? Thinking about maintenance standards, we're still at a pretty, you know, the pretty beginning of detail on what those are, but we're, we are factoring all of this in. What, what are the needs of our trees at different lights, life stages? What are the different aspects? Is it sustainable? Are there areas we need to manage more intensively than others? And then sometimes, the things that we need to manage are not necessarily proactively picked by us. So that proactive-reactive balance I mentioned earlier, there will always be an aspect of our work that's reactive. Something will happen. Where it happens and how much happens can certainly impact what else we're able to do, but it's an important part of building out our program that we are doing what we can to minimize reactivity and also fully owning that we need to stay capable of responding to it. This is unfortunately a recent trend that makes a good example of that point. We have had an uptick in tree vandalism that quite frankly has some of us stumped, and it's hard. There's days where it's, it's hard. Like, we're a bunch of eco-nerds who want to do cool things, and then we're, you know, Jillian will have to deal with a contract to remove that tree at Clark Lake. So worth calling out, another example of us trying to tap into communication and signage where we can track what's happening and communicate proactively. The risks that are presented by whether it's storm damage, vandalism, trees getting old, any, any type of thing, we know that that's something we're going to have to manage. We're trying to do what we can proactively, when, with all of our standalone tree data, we were able to go through and look at which trees were in which condition and might need to be assessed. We came to you last budget cycle with some of those numbers, and then, of course, we're left with the question of like, what about all those forested stands that I said aren't in the standalone inventory? This is our approach to managing that risk, tapped into that GIS expertise that we're super lucky to have again, to prioritize which lot lines we should be paying the most attention to getting eyes on. We have 58 miles of natural areas edge that could one way or the other present maybe tree risk, and until we have a chance to put eyes on it and prioritize, we couldn't even have that conversation. So, we're partway down that path, but once again, presenting you with the approach that we're using. However the trees are identified as potentially problematic, they go through a workflow. Having one urban forestry arborist person who can track that workflow is key. As we told Jillian when we hired her, we are not expecting you to deal with everything with a chainsaw, but having one person who can manage all of deal with everything with a chainsaw, but having one person who can manage all of these workflows is just, is crucial, because there's a lot of pieces that go into it. One way or the other, we have to have some sort of assessment that's done, whether that's Jillian in-house or a contractor that we would bring in, and then if there's a tree that unfortunately needs to be removed, that's the tree that had to come down at Saltair unfortunately because it had some sort of really cool sounding technical rot that I can't pronounce because I'm not Jillian, but it had to come down. So then we have to talk about how that happens, whether that's in-house or contracted. Lot of communication that needs to go with that. Uh-oh, what did I, okay, perfect. I thought I broke it. After that, the next part of that workflow is, is then what happens. We would love to be doing the, the tree selection and replanting every single time we do a removal. We're, we're not there yet, we're working on it. But concepts of, you know, which tree, which place, what's going to need to be maintained, is there a chance for community engagement? So those little sweeties with the stickers were helping us vote on which tree was going to go back in at Saltair as part of the grand opening. Another example of, if we have staff time, we really can find some awesome opportunities in intersections of those, those Venn diagrams if we're meeting our base expectations. Good segue to community engagement. And of course, this is my section, and I pinched myself for time. So I'm going to, I'm going to keep blurring through this. I appreciate your guys' sticking with my, my pace here. We'll go into all these details as I move through this. So yeah, updates to Green Kent. Let's not bury the lead. There's probably a couple people who are excited to hear. Green Kent is back. It is also, we're being really clear that it's not the same, right? It's back, and we know that we need to do our due diligence to our community who gave so much heart for so many years in saying, how is it different? It was a really hard conversation to come in front of y'all, I wasn't here, but to come and say, we need to pause this, we're not doing, we're not doing this justice. And so then to pick that up and make sure we're doing it responsibly, and meeting, meeting the needs both of our sites and the community. So we're focusing more on priority sites, making sure that we're doing a better job of focusing on long-term maintenance now that we have a staff team in operations to do so, working those events into site maintenance plans. Stewards will be coming back. I put super volunteers on there because I think there's potential for more variety of ongoing trained volunteers. As anybody in the region knows, there's, there's some really cool stuff with trained recurring volunteers that we could tap into. I don't have a, we are relaunching this X date at this point, but want to make sure that you guys know that that is very much on the radar. And the point that we're at, and the thing I want to point out today is, we're at the point where we would love to hear from people who have thoughts on that. So at our events this spring at Arbor Day and Earth Day, we made sure to call out, I actually had a couple people come up and ask like, hey, can I do this more, can I do this on my own time, can I do, you know, and, and we are at the point where we can say, you know, we're not quite there yet, but we, we know it's coming, so please, please come talk to us. That's just going to mess with my head every time it glitches because I'm always going to think it's my fault. So, we're not back to stewards yet. We do have hands-on stewardship for this year. We've got events scheduled. Basically, the model we're going with right now is every third Saturday. April gets two events because Arbor Day and Earth Day are both awesome. And we've got our calendar updated on the website. This, as was true in early Green Kent days, this is a really important way to engage our community in the hands-on sense of collective ownership over these spaces. Yes, we do need staff expertise to do it. We made the case, it's awesome, we have a team now, and that community buy-in is still very, very important. And so how can we do both? How can we integrate both of those in a team? You know, the downside is, the five of us are doing all of those buckets, and we'll, we'll tell you, you know, all day that that means we have to make hard choices, but the cool thing is that it's all the same group of people who's, you know, nerding out on the urban forestry at a site and talking about the site maintenance plan and engaging the community. So there's a lot of potential to, to bring it back with the lessons learned, bring some method, methodology and standardization of approach, which are all kind of jargony words, and still the heart of Green Kent. Especially when there's kids involved, right? Those are, that's our future, that's our future leaders, if we do it right. Speaking of kids, parks and schools, kind of important combination. I know in a lot of ways that will come up through our program, it's an aspect of our natural resources prioritization as well. So, we can factor in how we're managing our spaces to be classrooms, learning labs, hands-on training opportunities. We have to be intentional about making those spaces so they can be utilized. Couple examples of the type of stuff we want so much more of, right? Kids taking water samples, taking hikes at our sites. There's a lot of potential. We're the ones who know about that potential. We know the sites, we know what they have, we know the logistics, is there bus parking, is there a restroom, is there a really cool place to get out the water, to pull samples for this, that, or the other thing. We have the site expertise, we know about natural resources. Knowing about natural resources isn't necessarily the same thing as teaching natural resources. So, we need to take all this, this map that has a lot of cluttered information. Believe it or not, this was helping my brain plan. I know it's very hard to look at, so don't worry if you're like, that's, that's like stickers on a, on a piece of paper, that doesn't mean anything. But we, as our leadership team, our management team for natural resources, are trying to really ingest all of this information about our sites to see what would make them good opportunities for field trips, evaluate how they're spread out across the city, and then have conversations with our nonprofit environmental education partners. So we know the city wants more educational natural resources programming, as Garen said in the beginning. We know we have the spaces to do it. We know that we don't have enough staff time to manage all of our areas to this site improvement level, right? This like, let's have ecological restoration projects, which is what teachers really want to get their students engaged with. And we know we're lucky enough to work with some really, really cool nonprofit partners here in Kent who do environmental education, who do curriculum alignment, who do, you know, interpretation, who do all the hands-on teaching. That, as much as we can be eco-nerds, it's not always the same thing. And then we know that we can provide some benefits to those groups that they can't necessarily do on their own. We have access to these 800 acres, we know which ones might make good opportunities. So how can we team up? This word, this slide has a lot of words. The takeaway is, you know, we're only one year into actually having an established program. I know Green Kent did a lot of this stuff too, so I'm definitely not saying we're, you know, totally inventing the wheel, but we're, you know, we're one year into having more staff capacity again, and all of this is already happening at our parks with our, with our partners, with the level of support we've been able to provide so far in the last year having more staff time. Patrick and Connor were out leading a station at, you know, we had an environmental education partner, bring a whole busload of kids. They wrangled all the scheduling, they wrangled the buses, divvied them up into groups and sent one group at us to do our planting demo. So it's an example of how we can hopefully be a value-add to our partners, convince them to do what they do well, figure out how to support them in what they do well at our sites, and really, hopefully, find a mutually beneficial partnership. It's the model that we're, that we're moving forward with. Another example of a nonprofit ecological partner is more focused on restoration. This one's Green River Coalition at Riverview Park. This is more of a site adoption that some of you might be familiar with. In this case, GRC is bringing the expertise in putting on events and working with training crews, which is a little bit of a different niche, and then also being a crucial partner in the re-green, the green partnership along, along the river. Sorry. This is a summary of how we're approaching the breadth of environmental engagement potential at our parks. There's some events that are, you know, how can our community, how can our community benefit the site? There's some events that are, how can our site benefit the community, and there's the whole spectrum in between. If it's truly about getting, you know, getting a tree cut down, yeah, that's going to be staff, and our staff hours are always going to be crucial to supporting those events. But this whole spectrum of environmental education is really important to us. So it feels sometimes like we're running around in circles because we're trying to do some of everything. We're trying, we're intentionally trying not to put all our eggs in one basket, really tapping into partnerships and thinking about the variety of community engagement. Couple things we would like to do more of, and I'm going to blow through these, because I know I'm at slash over time. We know we have a lot more potential of supporting our business groups, being able to say yes more often when the phone rings and says, hey, I want to bring a group out. We are lucky enough to have some really cool partners who have hung on with us as we've had limited, limited staff capacity to support them. Hope to do more of it. Definitely hope to do more engagement around wildlife. Like, we have camera, wildlife cameras up at Clark Lake, and we have awesome footage of otters and owls and beavers, and we were able to send some of those videos to the teachers who are bringing out a group of third graders who, Patrick and Connor, were going to walk to see the dam. It was awesome. It's the tip of the iceberg. So, some sites, we have to juggle all of that. This is my last slide. We've got our Venn diagram, we've got our three categories. I'm going to run through this list. The whole takeaway is this is a lot to hold in any one person's head, and I am so thankful that there are five brains now. We have to coordinate across the five of us and communicate it and package it up. But at just, you know, just at North Meridian Scent Site started in 2021, we had a little wildfire. Don't worry, it was fine. Encampments that pop up, which is the standard, contractor cleanups and staff cleanups, wildlife camera that was put out there to make note of what was using some of the water bodies. We had, we were lucky enough to work with a training crew through King County and Dirt Corps called the Green Start Crew doing blackberry removal. We've held one volunteer event out there, there will be another one this year. We've got coordination with our parks planning department because it's an upcoming improvement project and adjacent to a school. We've got tree assessments that Jillian's doing along some of those lot lines right next to people's houses. We have our first known patch of garlic mustard, which is the Class A listed noxious weed species. Discussion of future trails, oh, proximity to the school I mentioned already, and a very active and awesome cricket group that is immediately adjacent to our somewhat blackberry-infested edge of the natural areas. We haven't gotten to that spot. Don't need to remember all of that. It's just an example that any one site can really press all of the buttons on that Venn diagram and all of the cool overlap. Garen, I'm sorry, I'm setting you up for a rushed ending here. Thank you all.
So, a lot of information, I think, as we're, as we were talking through all of this, and kind of bring it all together, kind of the theme that's up there. This, this is 15 years of information, lessons learned, as we've been talking about, and really trying to pull it all together into a comprehensive natural areas management program going forward. From what we have created and are continuing to evaluate, as we've heard, we've updated methodologies, we have informed our approach for managing natural areas in the park system, our portion of the urban forestry, and as you've read, and the community engagement program as a whole. It's very exciting. At the same time, as you've heard repeatedly through all of this, we are trying very hard to manage our own expectations about what we, as possible, and keeping us on a path that is truly sustainable going forward while looking at the opportunities that we know will be coming and currently exist. As we, as Margaret said, now that we have a core program being established, we are in a better position to look, truly look at and leverage other funding grant opportunities, other partnerships. As you all know, grants are competitive, which, we are taking the perspective that makes them not sustainable. There is the likelihood that we will not get some. So we'd rather position ourselves around with a core and then use those grant fundings for opportunities, whether that's to explore those partnerships, or leverage other, or take advantage of opportunities that are immediate. What we also know is that new priorities, new issues, other things will emerge. You know, as an example, we, near the Riverbend Complex, there is the Green River Trail, and we have an emphasis because of the activity that is going on there, we, we know that is necessary. Imagine that, that will continue going into the future. We need to be aware of that and be able to incorporate that and react and respond. There are all, we will always be looking at the potential, again, to leverage partnerships, address programming needs, address what, and understand and process what the community is currently desiring and desire maybe into the future. And as we, as we said, we are staring at our capital, our parks plan, the capital investments, wanting to be in a position to support all the opportunities that are coming from those investments, and of course, preserving and supporting those investments into the future. So, we threw a lot at you. Appreciate that you sat through all of this. It is a lot. But as I think we were trying to share, that, that is, we are truly trying to embrace all of that and transform it into something that is a program. So with that, if you have any questions?
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Margaret. Thank you, Dwight, Jillian, Connor, and Patrick, who's not here. Mighty team that gets the work done. I know I'm a big fan of our parks and natural resources, and I'm very excited to see you getting all the work done and having data to back it up. And it's always better to be proactive than be reactive. So I appreciate all the work you do, and I think, Councilor Michaud, comments?
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank you all for being here as well. It's good to see you here. I like seeing you outside better, but, no, you are a small team, and you're being asked to do so much. Seeing all the things that you have to deal with and get to do, it's a lot. So I want to thank you for doing so much. Something cool I saw in this thing was the field trips to parks. A lot of our schools are actually adjacent to parks, so it's really an, an expensive way to get a field trip and to get out there and get some education opportunities for students. So I just want to thank you. I know that this is a lot of work, and I want to thank you for all the nice pictures in this presentation. So, good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fincher, please.
Thank you very much. Well, that's a lot of information. What is the process for taking down a tree, a tree that's been burned, or is rotted, or for some other reason needs to come down, deemed unsafe, or whatever reason?
So, I guess we could go back. There, we utilize, or I say we, being Jillian, she may be probably the best person here to answer the question. The tree is evaluated on a set of criteria that's established. We follow what is established by the internet, ISA or National Society of Arbiculture. It translates into a score, and then we relate that score to all of the other trees we have, and then ultimately is a prioritization decision. Those, those type of criteria include, you know, if there is a target, so if it is a, a home, or a playground, or somewhere that's an active area versus being in the middle of the woods. The condition of the tree, which is related to, you know, its health, there's a scoring criteria for size, breadth, all those types of things. All that is accounted for in term, in some forms of decision whether a tree needs to come down now. I guess that's an important part too. A tree's timeline is not ours. So whether a tree needs to come down soon, meaning immediately, or we need to moderate more proactively over several years.
One other thing that's really cool about having more staff time with the ecological training and background is sometimes the tree doesn't have to come all the way down. So if a tree is in a natural area, a place where we can leave what's called a snag, Jillian will make a point to do that and direct either our staff or the contractors to take it down to a certain point that we know would be safe where it's still providing habitat benefit.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. With that, thank you so much. Thank you, team. And we're, we have our IT team here, James Endicott, IT manager. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening. James Endicott, Infrastructure and Security Operations for IT. With me I have Joe Bennett. He is a security engineer on our team, and so we're going to kind of walk through a little presentation. It's something that has been updated a little bit since the last time we talked. Before I do start this, I just want to take a sec and reflect. So the SOC, Security Operations Center, has been in place now for almost four years. And during that time, we've grown. We started off originally as one, and then we added Joe about three and a half years ago, and then a year later, a little bit over a year later, we added a secondary security engineer. So, some of the things that we're going to share here and we're going to talk about are just reflections of us getting budget and getting resources attached to our security program. So with that being said, before I do start, I do want to kind of, again, just throw out some, some thank yous to some appropriate people, starting with the mayor, Pat, Mike, executive leadership. Introducing security into an environment from nothing, when we really weren't doing anything, and to just start rolling it out is, is very impactful, right? And so we have to acknowledge that it's not the work that a couple of us in the SOC are doing, it's work that we're doing that we impact other people, all the way from IT staff to our end users. So, we do want to kind of give a shout out and a thank you to everybody that has supported us and allowed us to do our work. So, with that being said, we're going to kind of go just, like I say, a few reminders. Some of these you may have seen, some have been updated. So the SOC, Security Operations Center, we manage about So the SOC, Security Operations Center, we manage about, I should say manage, we protect between 800 and 1,000 devices, or sorry, users, depending on the time of year, whether we have temporary staff or not, but roughly 800 to 1,000 end users. With those end users comes about 3,800 network devices. That is printers and servers, laptops, desktops, IOT sensors. It's just a lot of stuff. And every one of those devices has to be considered and secured as we move forward. We get about 130,000 emails weekly at the city. And of those 130,000, only about 20% of them are of business value. And, you know, tragically, we have to deal with those, right? And it just takes space and time to manage those. So we have a number of tools at the city in our SOC that we leverage that basically monitor our infrastructure. One of those tools is what we call a SIM, and it takes a lot of logs and a lot of information. We analyze about 50 million data points every single day to find correlations between things. Because if we look at data, single view of it, and we look at it, go, well, that doesn't mean anything to me. But if I can take that piece of data and I can apply another piece of data, the system will go, well, wait a minute, there's something very odd going on here. If I look at those two kind of holistically. So as a human, we can't do that. So we have to have systems that help us with that. But it is an immense amount of data. When we first put that system in, we were only doing about 20 to 24 million events a day. Still a lot, but it can show you our growth. Kind of on that topic of growth, if you notice the bottom there, our internet traffic. That, for me, has been probably the most staggering thing of all the stuff that we deal with, the, the data growth that we have here at the city. So that goes right back at the beginning of COVID, right? Is when we really started tracking it, when we started moving people off-site. So on an average day, we were doing about 350 gigabytes of data in and out of our network. And so we look at 2023, January, we're just about 950 gigs. And so just a couple of weeks ago, last month, we were doing 1.1 terabytes. That's almost four times the amount of data in four years. That is a massive amount. And every bit of that data, we are looking at, we are protecting, we are making sure that we're trying to protect sensitive data from going in or going out. Let's see, a couple did you knows, I think. A couple did you knows, kind of getting into the topic of security. When we look at breaches in general, about 75% roughly of all breaches are due to human causes. Okay? And what does that mean? Well, that means that is somebody accidentally being socially engineered, clicking on an email. It could be a misconfiguration of a device, right? When we put devices on our network, it may be a misconfiguration. And then obviously, the insider aspect where somebody uses a device against the city. But it's a really quite staggering when you think about it, that, that high of a percentage of breaches are due to human factors. And then when we start getting into the actual breaches themselves, 80% of all security breaches are from phishing attempts. From, right? And we'll talk a few minutes about what phishing is and make sure that everybody has a grasp on that. But that is the easiest way to get into our network is sending a phishing email. If you think about it from that perspective, we have eight to 900,000 users out there who are all targets, who can prevent, you know, provide access to our network. And then if we look at, again, kind of in that spirit of phishing, if we look at the most popular attack channels, 40% is really done through email, phone, which is phishing or spoofing, and again, we'll talk about those in a moment. 27%, SMS, smishing or pretexting. 15%. And then the remainder is like Facebook, Messenger, WhatsApp, all those kind of social media, Instagram and whatnot. But as you can see, the email is, is the most targeted attack surface. And so, go ahead, Joe.
Oh. What we're looking at here is a screenshot of one of our tools. And what you're looking at is successful and failure of account logins. As you can tell, we apparently have people over the world. But it gives you a good example of what the real world is out there. Basically, this is a 24-hour period. This is pretty standard for us, and this is only for basically authentication to our O365 suite. As you can tell, over there in Kent, Washington, we have the green with all the successes. There are some failures naturally that we have. But they can, the bad guys do have an ability to basically mock where they are, and they can sit there and try to attack us from Kent, Washington, Auburn, wherever they want to go. So this is a good example of what it looks like, and this is a slice of the pie. So, yeah, perfect. And a little bit more on that. That is, again, as Joe said, this is a moment in time, right? We have days where it's very, very quiet on that front, and then we have days where we are just getting alerted where there's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of attempts. And a lot of times, you can find that those align with like major data breaches that have been released, whatnot. And so it is interesting, it's very cyclic. So again, this is probably a slide that everybody has seen, but there's probably a new part on here that we want to introduce. Right? Any successful security program is gonna be what we've referred to as a defense in depth. No single tool is going to protect us, and so we do have to kind of layer it. And so we look at it from a physical aspect, to a network aspect, to an application, right? It's security awareness, it's all those different layers. And we do things at every single one of those layers to make sure that ultimately, when we get down to the city's network, we have hopefully done enough to try to filter out, just like the drawing, all of these threats. The, the big thing that's kind of coming out now, and I'm sure everybody has heard it, it's a kind of a buzzword, and it is something that we started adopting about a year and a half ago, is zero trust architecture. And we are following, at this point, we are following federal guidelines on zero trust. And so we're taking our direction from them. So a lot of the, the white papers or the approach that we take, methodologies for implementation, are following what the, the government standards are. Because we know if we're meeting those, we're, we're definitely exceeding what we need to do. Zero trust. So back in the early days of cybersecurity, the, the statement that everybody had was trust but verify. And as the evolution and the maturity of the attacks and the way that they do their, their stuff, there had to be a new paradigm that we had to introduce, and that's zero trust, where we trust nothing. So if you want to log on, if you want to access something, you have to prove your you. If you want to go here, you have to do, everything has to be verified. And you have to basically enforce that you are allowed to do what you do. No more trust and then verify. It's, we don't trust anybody. So zero trust, in essence, that's what the framework's about, is taking a whole new approach and just locking down everything and making sure what your role is, that's what you get, nothing more, nothing less.
Thank you. So on that, right, one of the challenges that we face from a cybersecurity standpoint in implementing tools is how do we make sure that we can keep our users working, right? That we know that the tools that we put in place are naturally going to have an impact on them. But our job is to say, okay, well, how can we reduce that impact as much as possible? The reality of security is there's always gonna be some level of impact, right? And we just have to work through trying to minimize it, keeping their business process as whole as possible while securing, right? And that is one of the biggest challenges that we face. But it is, you know, again, as I talked about earlier, the city staff is understanding, yes, it may be frustrating, it may take you an extra five seconds, but there are reasons that we do that. And you're still up, Joe?
This is a diagram that will be in the handout. This is a representation of all our tools that we have in place, the ones that we're working to get in place, and the ones we're looking to get in place. So you will see the greens, that basically is the tools that are implemented. The reds are the, boy, I can't see. The project roadmap, okay, sorry about that. And then the yellow, active projects, and then the ones that we're looking at, the unverified controls. So each pillar is basically a, an area of defense for us. This is basically what the security program's all about. So you will see various, there are multiple tools for each pillar. That's part of the defense in depth. So, I can't think of anything else.
So if you look at the second page there, what we've done is to help you understand is that there's, there's each pillar listed, and then we kind of put a, a way to easily explain it. And I apologize, it is not, certainly not meant to be a belittling at all, but it is really trying to make sure that we give you really day-to-day comparable understanding of it. So apologize for that. But we want you to understand what do those mean. So now, if you look at this drawing, what we, what we have to do is, if you look, there's a lot going on there, right? There's a lot to do. And, you know, I tell you, if I come back four years ago and look at this, you know, I was really fearful because we weren't doing a lot. And now you start to say, okay, we're doing a lot of these things, and we're, we're starting to catch up. The yellows are the things that are in flight, and there's a lot going on right now because we have a, a lot of little projects going and/or we spent the first good year and a half to two years of the security program just putting our holes in the dam, right? Covering up those big leaks. And now that we've got those big leaks kind of filled, and the dam isn't leaking as much now, now we're starting to push out projects to other parts of IT. Like we go to another area of IT and say, hey, look at, this is a vulnerability that you have. You guys need to, you know, do a project to resolve that. And then we kind of help them as technical resources to get that done. So it's not, all these things are not necessarily projects that the security team is doing. We recommend, or we drive these projects. So looking at that, we also tried to tie some of the acronyms or the lettering to, to the names a little bit better for you. All right. So let's talk about the real stuff that we deal day-to-day. And when I, when I talk about this stuff, I think it's really important for you guys to know, this is stuff that is applicable to home, right? And this is not just work stuff. It is really important that when we go through our security awareness training that we, that we make mandatory for everybody, that everybody takes away, this is stuff we should be applying to our everyday lives. Certainly at work, but definitely, if you do it at home, you'll bring good habits to work. I think everybody has heard this, social engineering. It is literally one of the biggest things that we deal with. And social engineering, as a reminder, is just being able to find information about you and being able to make a profile on who are your kids, and who are your dogs, and what's your birthdays? Because people are creatures of habits, and they make passwords that are unique to kids' birthdays, or dogs' names, or favorite places to, to visit. So doing social engineering, they can get all that information, and they can build a profile, and then they can, they can easily hack you. On that list of social engineering, this is the most common thing that we train on and we talk about is phishing, right? That is getting an email that looks legitimate, or may not look legitimate in many cases, but a lot of times it looks legitimate. It's from your boss, it's from the mayor, it's from, you know, your neighbor, it's from a vendor. And the reality is, is, and again, this really happens a lot more in the personal space, is the social engineering aspect, they build urgency. They build a sense of, oh my gosh, if I don't do this, I'm gonna get in trouble. Or, oh my gosh, I won the lottery, or I won this, right? So they try to build like an emotional response because people have decreased decision-making capabilities when they have those types of things on their mind. So again, part of social engineering. Phishing. There are a couple of new words, some of these you guys may not have heard of, but phishing is voice social engineering. So if you get a phone call and they say, hey, this is your bank, we need you to verify, that is a voice social engineering, and it is referred to as phishing. Smishing, I promise you, you've all seen that. We get the text messages, SMS text messages from the post office that says, hey, we have your package, click here to claim it. Yep, right? They come all the time, and so that is smishing. The new one that we're seeing is, is quishing. And that is QR codes, okay? And it is funny, we have an internal thing here at the city that I joke with Patty Bell and Multi-Mirror and comms about, that I am not a fan of QR codes. It's one thing when you walk into an established business and they have it posted in a public place. And a, a real standard now of QR codes is businesses embedding their logo in the middle of the QR code. So if you look at that and you say, oh, that's their logo, it is a little bit of a layer of, hey, this is legitimate. But if you ever walk up to a QR code that's on the side of a light post in the middle of nowhere, I beg you, please do not click on it. But I, I cannot tell you how many people actually do that. So those are the big, those are big, high-risk things that we really, you know, kind of train on every day and that are our challenges every single day. The new one, which is, again, is kind of a buzzword, but it is literally the new, very big challenge, and day by day, it is becoming bigger. It's artificial intelligence. And phishing emails, excuse me, they're, they're becoming more difficult to spot. Back in the day, they always said, oh, it's a misspelling, or, you know, words are a little bit out of order. With AI now, you are not seeing that stuff, and so it just becomes a more difficult way to spot these types of things. And we are seeing these in the emails that we're, we're getting. And, and kind of the, the flip side of that is what we're doing in our training now, we're increasing the difficulties of our training. And just as a reference, when, prior to really having the AI aspect, we had the city down to about a 3.5% failure rate of phishing, which is phenomenal. I mean, that is really good, it's well below industry. And when we turned on AI, that jumped up to like 32 to 35% failure rate because they were so good. Some of them, you guys have seen them, some of them are very obvious, right? But some of them are becoming so good that I've had a time where I've had to stop and go, ooh, is this real? And I have to go into our council to look to see, is this a real one or not? So, but, so that, that's really changed the landscape for us. And another thing that Joe, he likes to use a lot is continuous, or sorry, whack-a-mole, right? Some days, we feel like all we're doing is just problem, knock it down, problem, problem, right? And that's what we get stuck in because things are changing so fast. AI has created a world where things change literally by the minute. And I was, shared an article the other day, we were reading, and kind of a new thing, and it really struck me a lot, was this security engineer talking about the new wave of security. And it's, they were talking about something that was called session cookie hijacking. But his comment was, why hack when you can just log in? And it is about getting people's credentials now. And at the end of this, we'll talk a little bit about MFA. And, you know, when we go back three years ago, MFA was all the rage. You gotta implement MFA, it's gonna save all the world, it's gonna fix all of our security problems. And here we are now, four years later, almost four years later, and we're like, oh, man, we're back at almost base with, with MFA now. Because MFA is not the bullet anymore, right? So there are things that are happening now in this space that there aren't even tools to address. So in this space, like session cookie hijacking, there is nothing out there and available at this point. So we've got to figure out how do we deal with this until something comes out. And then just additional threats that we face, right? These are the things that are more business-related, they're insider threats, right? And when we say that, that doesn't mean that we have people at the city that are malicious and they're trying to break things and trying to hack us. But they accidentally click on an email, they accidentally go to a website, right? So those are still considered inside threats. The real world, the things that you always see on movies, is the outsider threats, right? It's the people that are on the outside, kind of knocking against our firewall on a daily basis, port scanning us to see what is out there. And that happens in real life, every day, we can see nation-state activity hitting our firewall. And the tragedy is, there's nothing we can do about it, we just have to be able to stop them at the firewall. And then the last big risk that we really are facing, and it's really come up more and more as a topic, especially across the city, is kind of the information security aspect. It's the compliance of it, the archive retention. And those are becoming bigger conversations across the city, which is, which is great for us. So again, ransomware, everybody knows what that is, right? That if, day-to-day, this is the number one thing that scares us, right? We, we plan a lot of stuff, we protect from a lot of stuff, but more than anything else, we, we practice more against ransomware than anything else. And why is that? Well, when we look at the landscape of industry, municipality and government is not at the top, but it is very, very close. And you can also see, it's, I'm sorry, the slide is really difficult. The left is municipalities. The left is municipalities. Look at the jump in the last, you know, three years. And there's a perception that municipalities have unlimited dollars, and that they'll pay it, right? And so you've got to be able to address that. Let's see. All right. So a couple of things, just kind of talking about some ransomware, recent attacks. I'd like to throw this in, I don't know if anybody saw this, but the city of Wichita, this weekend, they're, I think, in the top 25 largest cities in the country. They got hit this weekend with a ransomware attack, and they had to take all of their systems offline. And at this point, we don't know anything more than that. We don't know who did it, we don't know if there was a demand or anything like that. But a very large city, right? Doesn't matter the controls, doesn't matter the resources. At the end of the day, in IT, we always say, it's not a matter of if, it's just a matter of when, right? And again, that goes with the big guys as well. And then the other one, I always like to kind of remind everybody is, you know, when we talk about the demand, right, versus doing a recovery. City of Baltimore was hit in 2019. Their original demand was about $76,000 that they could have just paid at that point in time. They chose not to, not that it wasn't the right decision, but they decided not to pay that. But by the time it was all said and done, they had invested over $20 million to recover. And that was to basically rip every piece of IT equipment out that they had because they could not be sure that they got rid of the infection, and they had to replace everything. So those are things that we always kind of talk about, that, you know, when we have some sort of significant breach, that will be a conversation that we have to have, is, are we in a position to pay that? Is that a better option? You know, federal, the FBI says, no, don't pay it because you're just kind of legitimizing it. But when you talk about recovery being measured in weeks, and in some cases, months, it's a conversation that I'm not capable of making, but, you know, executive definitely are. And then the last little piece that I want to share on that is the recovery averages. So in 2019, the average recovery, again, when you look at it across the landscape, was about $1.45 million. If we look at it in 2022, 4.5, and then in 2023, 5.13 million. That is an average cost of recovery. That is staff time, that is downtime, that is infrastructure, all the things that go, you know, with that. And to remind everybody, when that day happens, it's not like, oh, we detected it, we stopped it, we remediated it. There is a long-term impact to it, it is the reputation, it is not just, you know, a start and stop. So I would like to remind people that. The one thing I do want to share on this topic, and I want to say it's a reflection of, again, the support that we've gotten from executive leadership, also the work that Joe has done, the support that Mike has given us, is if we look at, and I didn't put the numbers up here, but our insurance premiums for cybersecurity insurance. If we go back to 2021, it was $54,000. 2022 was $102,000. 2023 was $102,000. When we went through it in 2024, we actually had a 20% reduction in premiums. And it is directly tied to the work that has been done in the security operations. And the other piece, we got a reduction in our premiums, we also got an increase in our coverage. So it was really nice to see that. It was just a reflection of all the good work that is being done by the team in there. And this is just, this one is an interesting one. This is kind of shows the overall demands over the last couple of years. The one thing that's happening in this space, people are getting more and more nervous to talk about these things. And so data, in some cases, is being shared less. You know, when you get big organizations, they have to report it, right? Because their website's down, or municipalities and governments, because they don't have a choice, it's transparency. But you're finding that a lot of small businesses, medium businesses now, are just dealing with it, and they're not reporting it. And so sometimes some of these metrics may be skewed, or they may not be fully reported. That's why I don't have anything past 2021, because sometimes there is some reluctance to report that. And so I want to end this really quick with two quick videos. The first video is, takes place at DEF CON, which is basically a, I think it's among the largest hacking conventions in the world. And it is a live social engineering attack. And it just shows you aspects of social engineering that I think is really good. This is something that we share with all new users as well. So can you be able to start that?
I'm not quite there.
Yeah, you got it, good call, I got her. I got her trained. Yeah, see if that'll work. Either one. Yep.
So I invited a few of the world's best hackers to try to hack me and show me where my vulnerabilities are. And now I'm going to meet them in Las Vegas for DEF CON, the biggest hacker convention of the year. They're going to hack me using social engineering, which is essentially hacking without any code. They just use a phone and a bit of an infection.
Do you want to do an example of phishing?
What's phishing?
Phishing is voice solicitation. And basically, what you do is use the phone to extract information or data points that can be used in a later attack.
Let's do it. Who are you going to call?
Maybe I'll call your cell phone provider and see if I can get them to give me your email address.
I bet they're good, I bet they know my background. But yeah, go for it.
I'm going to spoof her number, so it's going to look like it's calling from you.
Okay.
Hi, I'm actually, I'm so sorry, can you hear me okay? My baby, I'm sorry. My husband's like, we're about to apply for a loan, and we just had a baby, and he's like, get this done by today. So I'm so sorry, I can't call you back. I'm going to log into our account for user information, and I can't remember what email address we used to log into the account. The baby's crying, and can you help me? Awesome.
In just 30 seconds,
At gmail.com?
Jessica gets access to my personal email address.
If I needed to add our daughter on our account so she could come in and make changes, how would I need to go about it? You would have to send me a secure PIN through the system. Yeah, well, the thing is, I don't think I'll be able to receive a text message if I'm on the phone. Oh, I'm not on there either? He added to the email.
Jess uses my girlfriend's name and a fake social security number.
5127.
To set up her own personal access to my account.
Wait, I'm sorry, so there's no password on my account right now? Can I set that up?
She even gets the support person to change my password.
Thank you so much for your help today.
So she just basically blocked me out of my login.
I'll get a fed. All right, thank you.
Holy shit. So they just gave you access to my entire cellphone account.
You're going to have to go on and change your password now, Jess, my name.
And all it took was a crying baby and a phone call.
All right, so this next one's just a really quick, another quick little video. This one is, all of our videos up this point, our training videos, have always been like a technical person telling you, don't do these things, don't do these things. We found a series that, in a corny way, almost dramatizes what happened. So when you're watching this, you're going to be like, well, this is very weird. But it is a very interesting approach, and it's kind of talking about it from an end-user standpoint.
I know it's wrong, but it feels so... Shake a leg, the brainstorm's kicking up in the boardroom. Okay, this world is crazy. One second of not paying attention, and bam, I lost my company millions. The IT team told us they were changing the way we use multi-factor authentication. Instead of text messages, we would now be using an app because it's more secure. Whenever I log in, I'll receive a push notification to my phone that I need to accept if it's me, or deny if it's not. Easy enough, right? Months later, I got an email from our IT team that they were upgrading our app, and that I might get multiple NFA notifications as a result. They apologized in advance for the possible spamming of notifications, and told me that once I accept one of them, it'll stop. Well, guess when these notifications started flooding my phone? 1:00 AM. They woke me up out of dead sleep and wouldn't stop coming. I think I had like 15 notifications. I accepted the last one I received, which made them stop, and then I went back to sleep. Later that week, I learned the company got hacked and lost millions. An investigation led the IT team to the NFA notification I accepted. Apparently, it wasn't them who sent me that email or spammed me, it was cyber criminals. I had no idea how they got my password in the first place, but they successfully bypassed my NFA by spamming me. And they did it in the middle of the night when they knew I wouldn't be in the right state of mind. So learn from my mistake. Be extra careful before accepting any NFA notifications. And have a strong password that is not reused anywhere. And above all else, if the IT department sends you an email that goes against security protocol, call them to verify.
All right, so thank you for that. So again, just a little bit different take on that. But these are the things that we have to face now daily. And MFA is a perfect example of that. The thing that we kind of put into place three and four years ago is kind of the golden thing. Every time you put in a mousetrap, you just get a smarter mouse. So, again, I want to thank you all for the time tonight. It's always a joy to share this stuff with you guys, appreciate it. Have a good night. Sorry, any questions, sorry.
Thank you, James. Thank you, Joe. Any, oh, Councilmember Troutner, followed by Councilwoman Michelle.
Thank you, Madam President. Couple of questions. The first question is, so last week, I got an email from Councilmember Cora, actually, asking me one of those, she needed something done quickly, was I available? I deleted it. Are we supposed to forward those to you, or are you aware that I've already received it?
So it's a great question. So there's multiple ways you can handle it. You can delete it, no problem. If you're unsure it's legitimate or not, you can forward it to ISP@kentwa.gov, and that goes to mine and Joe's mailbox. And then we basically review every message. We make sure, one, that it's not a test, and then find out, is it a legitimate phishing email or a legitimate email? So it's entirely how you want to handle that.
Okay. And then my other question, you mentioned the test. Are you still doing that frequently, where you're sending things out to users and seeing who's biting and kind of using that as an education piece?
Yes, so again, great question. Let me share a little bit of our perspective on this space right now. If we go back, again, three or four years ago, when we first implemented the security awareness training and the phishing aspect, it was very impactful, and it was doing its job. As we've moved through time, it's more morphed into just checking a box, right? And there is kind of a change, at least we are feeling and driving a change, that we need to move away from training to education. And the system that we use now is more training, and we want to educate people, the why of those things. So to answer your question, yes, we are still doing it. We do expect over the next year that we are going to be changing how we approach our training because we want people to understand the why of those things. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for your presentation. My question was similar because the mayor emails me a lot and asks me to do special projects. So I just wanted to know what to do with those.
Yeah, no, again, delete them. You know, and as much as we can sit here and we laugh and we think, you know, about, and we, in our minds, we're like, well, that's obvious. It's actually quite shocking how many people do fall for that, right? That have this belief that is going down that way. So, again, education, explaining to people so they understand the why on why we do things.
Madam Mayor, you have to stop asking for those gift cards. Councilmember Boyd, followed by Councilmember Boyd, please.
Just a simple question, are there any help needed from us? I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on, I mean, I don't know if any help needed.
Again, thank you for that question, I really appreciate it. As I said at the beginning, the, one thing that Joe's reflected on his time here is he has never seen an organization with the executive support that we have. And that's all I can continue to ask for you, is if we bring forward legitimate, you know, data-driven requests, you know, you ask your questions, and you just keep supporting us the way that you are.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Council President. Thank you, James, for the presentation. You got me scared, really. I mean, everybody here should be scared. And I'm wondering, does it ever get better? I mean, do we just start, like you said, zero tolerance? I mean, everything, all the time, everywhere? I mean, putting in your debit card, you know, paying to get out of, paying for a toll? I mean, does it ever get better? I mean, are we getting closer to counteracting this?
Yeah. Councilmember Boyd, it's, again, great question. And I wish I could give you optimistic news. And it kind of goes back to my statement earlier, right? As soon as we put in a better mousetrap, we get a smarter mouse. The biggest thing that I can always express to people is just be diligent. Literally, do not trust anything that you see. You know, I, again, this is an interesting space because we talk about how it impacts our enterprise, but all these things that we talk about really impact our personal world. And the thing that I, you know, I talk like to my in-laws about, because they're, you know, older, and, you know, I talk to them, because my mother-in-law always says, oh, I'm not, I don't have anything that they want, right? And I'm like, okay, they're not going to get you for a million dollars, that's fine. But what if I told you, you could not have access to your bank account for 30 days? You couldn't access your credit cards, your bank account? What would you do? And she goes, well, I'd be in a lot of trouble. And I said, exactly. So don't think of it as, I don't have anything. Think about protecting what you have. Everything that you do, you should be thinking about, what am I committing to? What am I clicking on? What am I putting my debit card in? What phone number? You know, never trust your phone. When it rings and it says, US Bank? And they say, oh, hey, Mr. Boyd, we have this, and we need you to approve this? You say, okay, great, I will call you back. You hang up, you get the number of your local branch, and you call them and say, I had this request, right? Trust nothing, verify everything. I know it's a really sad world, that is the truth.
Because, you know, I think there's another way too. I don't know what you call it, but sometimes they won't ask for all your information at one time. They'll get a piece of information from you at one time, and then call you back later, maybe a couple of days later, get another piece, and then, you know, a few days later, get another piece. What do you call that, that same thing as phishing, or what?
So, great question. That's called what we call pretexting. So sometimes, have you ever received a text or an email that doesn't ask you for anything? It just maybe starts a conversation, right? And so that's kind of pretexting. They're getting that relationship established. Because when we establish a relationship, what do they do? You start to trust them, right? So you could have a scenario where it could be a two or three months back and forth. I think it's, take an extra minute and share a real-life supply chain story kind of tied to that. There is something in our world that's called open-source software, right? And there's this gentleman who created this security tool. And he's one guy trying to manage it all. And there was a hacker that was looking at his code and saw an error. And so he told this developer, hey, you have this problem in your code. Well, he spent eight months developing a relationship with this coder, and playing a nice guy. And then eventually, this coder said, hey, do you want to come work for me? And then he hired this hacker into his business to help him support that. And then after a couple of months, this hacker basically put a backdoor into this piece of code. And this piece of code runs on like 1.5 million servers in the world. And it was completely invisible, and it just happened to be a guy at Microsoft caught it. But my point is, you can't trust anything, right? Because, again, people will play it the long haul, eight, nine months. If they know, imagine, I can invest eight to nine months, and I can have access to 1.5 million servers. It's a very scary space. Can't live in fear, we just have to make sure that we're diligent about the things that we're doing.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
With that, we are at the end of our meeting. Thank you, James, thank you, Joe, and we will see you all at 7:00.